December 17, 2018. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I wanted to mention that when we update our procedures, I'm going to suggest that to advance our commitment to inclusivity, we make it our practice to use the traditional version without the addition of the phrase "under God." Many people in Albany are not religious believers, and we should be able to share our commitment to the indivisibility of the republic and its aspirations to liberty and justice without injecting a religious element that some cannot affirm in good faith. So if there is no objection, please join me in the traditional Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would call the roll?
Councilmember Barnes, right here. Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Councilmember Pilch?
Present.
Vice Mayor McQuade?
Here.
Mayor Nason? Here.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda then is the ceremonial matters. We are going to recognize Councilmember McQuade, Vice Mayor McQuade, for her service as mayor. Very good. Will you join me at the podium? In this setting, it seems hardly necessary to list Peggy's accomplishments as mayor. So I'm really just speaking for the record and for the people present in the room when I say that she has been an amazing leader, whose compassion and commitment to diversity have helped unite the community, as exemplified by her energetic support of making Albany a sanctuary city and a provider of social services through the Albany Resource Center. That slide is no longer up, but you probably noticed it earlier if you were here. She helped keep Albany safe by building the strong community and police partnership the city enjoys and strengthening our city governance with her outstanding support and encouragement to the city manager and her staff. Peggy McQuade, we are all grateful for your service to Albany as mayor, as a council member, and all the many professional and volunteer roles in which you have worked to help make this an ever-improving place to live. Okay, the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. Does any council member want to pull an item?
Five-five.
Five-seven.
Okay, let's start with five-five. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, the item before you is a follow-up from your last meeting where the council reviewed the existing advisory bodies to the council. You have two resolutions included in the packet. One is modifying changes to the meeting procedures of certain advisory bodies to the council and establishing training procedures. This resolution speaks directly to both the Arts Committee as well as the Charter Review Committee. The second is Resolution 2018-138, which is specific to the changes the council directed for the Sustainability Committee to transfer the name to Climate Technical Advisory Committee. In your last meeting, the options matrix included the name CAP-TAC, Climate Action Plan Technical Advisory Committee. Staff took the initiative to try and shrink that a bit because it sounded a bit cumbersome in its nomenclature. Looking at regional websites and the EPA website, the phrase "climate" is included on some of those sites. Again, it's nomenclature. The primary purpose is to focus the work of the committee on implementing the Climate Action Plan. So we'd be happy to change the name to whatever the council may wish.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
Do we have? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, but we'll do public comment and then council comment.
Okay. Jennifer and Tom Cooper?
Hi, thanks. I'm Jennifer Daly, and I'm the current chair of the Arts Committee. And I wanted to come comment because actually I wasn't aware that the Arts Committee mandate was being changed until I received an email from our supporting staff, Eva Phelan, after our last meeting. So I'm really here just to represent my own perspective because, to tell you the truth, I do not know how my colleagues on the Arts Committee feel about the mandate being changed because I didn't, we didn't know what was happening. My concern about it is, I don't really know the council's intent in changing our mandate. I'm not sure why this is happening, but it feels like it restricts the mandate to the portion of our work that's really linked to the visual art objects in Albany and the implementation of what is actually called the Public Arts Master Plan, not the Arts Master Plan. And there's been a lot of active discussion on the Arts Committee recently about the definition of public art in Albany. And I think I'm not alone in feeling that it might be great if the city thought about whether that only is meant to include visual art. It really is stated that way right now, so it's true that these documents do guide us, and that's what, an important part of what we do. But I think there's a sense that it's great for the city to maybe follow the lead of other public agencies and think about public art as something that doesn't only mean physical objects. And I'm not even sure if that's something we can discuss with the council and think about going forward in the way that this is rewritten. So I'm a little concerned about that. The Arts, the Public Arts Master Plan is written in 2010, and in 2011, Art Place America started funding what's now become called creative placemaking. It's really kind of upended how cities and civic entities think about the role of the arts in our communities. And you're seeing really exciting partnerships that are bringing artists to the table really early in community development processes in really exciting ways. And I don't know that what we have in Albany right now captures that. And I feel like the Arts Committee would be, would love to work with the city council and the city to think about ideas and think outside the box and, and come up with, you know, going forward over the years, creative ways that Albany could engage with the arts. And this feels like it's linking what we do very specifically to the implementation of these documents, which is important work, and these are documents that guide us, but I don't know if it's all that we do. I'm also concerned that, that some of our members are engaged in really important projects. They volunteered to run for a long time, like running the Community Arts Gallery, the little Haiku, Fall into Haiku project, which one of our members spearheaded. And I don't know how that fits into this new mandate. It feels like the mandate is more narrow, so I'm not sure. And I guess I would just conclude by saying that the main people who probably read the mandate of the Arts Committee are people who are applying to be on the Arts Committee. And had I read this mandate when the, the school board asked me to join the Arts Committee, I would have read these documents and said, "This is a board for visual artists who have an expertise in selecting visual art. That's not me. My background is in arts education and performing arts." And I would have said, "This is not the body for me." So those are my concerns. Thanks very much.
My name's Tom Cooper. I was on the Green Albany Task Force that council started in 2006 that ultimately led to the formation of the Sustainability Committee. I was the chair of the Sustainability Committee for the first seven years. And I'm here tonight to speak against changing the name of the Sustainability Committee. First off, I'm very concerned about how this whole thing came up. We were informed the day of our meeting on December 5th that this action had been taken by council. There wasn't any notice from our staff that an issue was coming to council that would warrant our interest. We often get those kinds of messages from staff that something's coming before the council that we've discussed. So it was, it was, there was no play, the way to put it on the agenda. We haven't had any opportunity to discuss what it means or what we think it means to change the name. My thoughts about it are that, like all other committees, we have a work plan that is approved by you, the council. And if that work plan is out of alignment with the direction that council would like the sustainability to, to take, that's an opportunity to give us that kind of direction. Or, of course, council can give us any direction anytime. So I don't think it's warranted to say what the focus of the Sustainability Committee is in this very long name. If you look around to other cities across the United States, they're called Sustainability Committees. They're not called, I can't even recall the, the name of it, but they're typically called Sustainability Committee or Environment, you know, Committee, that kind of thing. So I'm just concerned about this, that there's some, some other motive behind it that is not being presented to us. When we were formed, the, the, by the task force, the main things that came out of the task force was, one, to form a Sustainability Committee, and, two, to put on an annual event that would promote sustainability across the city. Well, Park and Rec has refused to continue that, so there is no annual event anymore. And so I don't know if there's a connection between those two things, but I, I don't think we've had an opportunity to discuss this. I don't understand why the name is being changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there further comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Are there comments? I think Vice Mayor McQuade had a comment.
I do have several comments. I'll start with the Sustainability Committee. There is, I believe, a problem in the resolution where it reads, "The school district appointment shall preferably be a junior, and the term shall begin at the end of the sophomore year and shall be for two years." That doesn't work because the end of any school year is in June, and we actually appoint people beginning in January. So I think after the word "preferably be a junior" should just stop. It should be like, period. And, you know, it probably means that like in a year and a half, the student would possibly go away to college, but I think that's okay. But I, the term really doesn't begin at the end of the sophomore year unless they're actually going to start midway through, which doesn't make any sense, at least not to me.
This was included in the original resolution or update thereof for the Sustainability Committee, and I'm not recalling exactly what the timeframe was, but we can certainly end it after junior year or preferably be a junior.
Just, that just kind of makes more sense to me. You know, I think, we got several emails, and I've read some comments suggesting that the name Climate Action Committee. For me, I think that works fine. I'm certainly willing to hear what others have to say. And as far as the Arts Committee, I think one of the pieces that's, that's missing in this discussion is having them update the Art Master Plan in the coming year. And I think in doing that, that will flesh out the other things that they're doing. And so I would prefer to leave this as it is, with the understanding that their, one of their main focuses this year is going to be updating the Art Master Plan, and in that way bringing in cultural activities, performing arts, all of those things, putting them right into the master plan, rather than trying to attach them now where they're not really in the master plan and then they're almost a sidecar. I would rather just leave it how it is and get it into the master plan. And I think the final thing that I would say is that I think going forward, we, we do need to do a better job in communicating with our advisory bodies. It does seem there's been, I don't think there's any conspiracy here. I don't think there's any underlying, "Oh, we're going to sneak this in." But I think we just need to do a better job next, next time around with this.
Other comments?
I can go. Thank you. I agree, I think with all of Vice Mayor McQuade's comments. I too wish the notification had been different. And I want to clarify that the suggestions did come from staff. It wasn't something that the council proactively suggested. But I think Climate Action Committee would be a suitable name. I also agree with Mr. Cooper that the work plan also should, is another gating device that allows us to adjust what the committee and commissions work on. So we don't necessarily need to be so prescriptive. But I, I think that if we, I think that the, it seems like the Sustainability Committee has been focused on climate action measures, and I would suggest that they use the work plan going forward, or suggestions for what they will put on the work plan for, for, to bring in front of the council to see if we, if we agree. The Public Arts Master Plan, I think the, just as Mayor McQuade said, I don't really have to cover it again, but there'll be an opportunity to update that. So I, I suggest that we use that opportunity to incorporate these other ideas of, about what public art is, and I very much encourage that. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
I, I find myself agreeing with the other two council members, but I'd particularly like to emphasize Vice Mayor McQuade's thought that we do need to do a better job in communicating to committees and commissions about potential changes and why this, this might make sense, rather than them hearing about it kind of after the fact. So, you know, that's my only particular emphasis on that.
Councilmember Barnes, do you have any comments? Okay. Well, does anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I'll move the consent calendar with the one change that I think--
I think we've also got--
Seven was pulled also.
Oh, sorry.
So, do you want to keep going and then come back to the motion?
Yes, that is our usual practice, correct? So we'll go to five-seven. But before we do it, I'm not positive that I asked if anyone in the audience wanted to pull anything from the consent calendar. No, I've seen none? Then let's go to five-seven.
I brought up five-seven primarily because I have a question that's a little bit related to what's going on in the roads. As many people in Albany know, our sewer lines and a lot of our water lines are being replaced. They've been doing a pretty good job of eventually patching the streets, but the one thing I have noticed, have not noticed happening is redoing the crosswalk lines or the chevrons over the speed bumps or the divider lines on some of the, on some of the larger streets. And I'm wondering what, what's up with that? Is that East Bay Mud's responsibility, the sewer contractor's responsibility, or is the city going to get to it eventually?
Yes, thank you. So the responsibility is with whoever, whatever agency is doing the work. So in terms of the work that was done by East Bay Mud earlier this year on Nielsen, on Curtis, near the school, they are responsible for that. I actually had to elevate that last week, and I believe some of the, some of the intersections that East Bay Mud was responsible for got done, will get done tomorrow.
Okay.
To go back to your other question about the sewer projects, those are the contractor's responsibility, so we can do a clean sweep of that to see if there's any areas that have not been picked up by those contractors.
Okay. Yeah, just hoping it will get done, because I've, I've often seen it, that there's these patch jobs done and then, you know, everything, all the lines that were originally out there just start disappearing, so.
Yeah, we meet with Ranger Contractor, Ranger Pipeline, once a week, and we go through all of their, what they call their, their checklists on the, on the portions of the project there. The pipelines are done, and we remind them of all of the items that still need to be replaced, so we'll get that cleaned up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I think we can take a motion, and I think the motion would be on both resolutions, unless someone would like to make a motion on one of them.
I would just move the entire consent calendar with the stipulation that we incorporate the change that Vice Mayor McQuade suggested and that we use the name Climate Action Committee for the Sustainability Committee.
Hold on a second.
Can the clerk read the roll?
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuade?
Yes.
Mayor Nason?
Yes. Thank you. Good of the City is the next agenda item. Good of the City is a time for persons desiring to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda. Please note that city policy limits each speaker to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. Do we have speaker cards for Good of the City?
Yes, we do. Kirk Schumacher, Susan Schwartz, and Bob Flasher.
Mayor and council members, I'm Kirk Schumacher, a longtime property owner in Albany. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I want to address a provision of the rent review ordinance. A concern came to mind as a result of a comment made at last week's rent review workshop, which highlighted, highlighted a provision on which I had not previously focused. Section 5-25.3 deals with a notice of availability of rent review. The workshop pointed out that there is no requirement to provide a copy of this notice to current tenants. This makes sense, since a current tenant is in no way affected by the rent review ordinance unless and until there's a rent increase in excess of 5%. And such an increase may never occur, so the notice is essentially irrelevant before then. Similarly, a new tenant has no need for a copy of the notice of availability of rent review. Such a tenant will not be affected by the rent review ordinance and procedures unless and until a rent increase in excess of 5% is requested by the landlord. Nevertheless, that section of the ordinance requires that the notice be provided, quote, "at the time a rental agreement is entered into." Note that this is worded so that it doesn't apply only at the time of initial move-in, but would apply repeatedly to landlords who obtain a new agreement annually at lease expiration. This provision is unnecessary, wasteful, and potentially risks serious unintended consequences. This is because that section further says, "Any rent increase accomplished in violation of this section shall be void, and no landlord may take any action to enforce such an invalid rent increase." This section also says, "If a landlord fails to properly notice a tenant pursuant to this section, the landlord must renotice the tenant in accordance with this section prior to demanding or accepting any increase in rent." As surely as the sun will rise tomorrow, there will be a plaintiff's attorney who will assert that a tenant did not receive the required notice at the time a rental agreement is signed. And it's impossible to later renotice a tenant in accordance with this section for two reasons. First, you can't renotice a, a notice that was never given. Second, any later attempt to renotice would not meet the requirement of doing so at move-in. The notice provided at the time of a rent increase would not meet the requirement to do so at the time a rental increase is entered into, and so would not be in accordance with this section. I don't think the council intended for a landlord's irrelevant oversight of an unnecessary provision at move-in to mean that no future rent increase could ever be implemented. I would request that the council amend the rent review ordinance to remove the requirement that a copy of the notice be provided at the time a rental agreement is signed. This is not something that can be put off while we see how the ordinance works. It needs to be addressed now because rental agreements are being signed every day. I can provide a copy of these comments to anyone who would like to review this in more detail. Thank you.
Please provide your comment to the city clerk, if you would.
Good evening. I'm Susan Schwartz, head of Friends of Five Creeks, 22 or so-year-old, all-volunteer group working from Berkeley to Richmond and founded in Albany. Since we had to be here this evening, I thought we'd take the chance at Good of the City to get, to let you know a little bit more about what we really do, other than come to meetings. So this is what we've done in Albany this month. On December 9th, Steve Hegarty, who will be here later, I believe, led 17 volunteers planting more than 100 natives on Cerito Creek at Adams, also some clearing. This is on the north side of the creek, but it is in Albany. It's all weird. This was our second go-around here. We'd done all this before. Back in 2004, it was all destroyed when PG&E enforced its safety requirements, and we don't object to that, but we're still having to do it all, all over again. Earlier December 1st, postponed from the, a week because of smoke from the date we originally told the city, about that number, 15 or so, Grizzly Peak Fly Fishers cut back the Evergreen Thornless Blackberry that was completely hiding the creek south of Belmont Village and running rampant toward the so-called Creekside Trail. Extremely successful, lots of fun. And on that day, and then again on the 12th, high schoolers on the 1st and our weed warriors on the 12th removed what we call routine work, removing trash weeds and some piles of green waste between 9th and 10th on Codernices, which is a block we've maintained since 2000. So that might give you some idea. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Bob Flasher, and I just want to comment on some of the things that came up here this evening. People from the Arts Committee, Sustainability Committee, and now the Creek Maintenance Group are here talking about how changes are being proposed by staff without the groups that you depend on for feedback being consulted. A lot of these things are taken in by surprise. And I think a meeting is coming up, a maintenance meeting about how to maintain the creeks is coming up, from which Friends of Five Creeks has been excluded.
That, that, that will be, we're going to have that discussion. That's on the agenda, so that's--
The thing that's frightening for me is that the staff seems out of touch with the citizens that are doing the work for you and giving you, providing you feedback. And that seems like a recipe for disaster eventually because you get too far apart after a while. So I would really suggest that you direct staff to involve the people on your Arts Committee, Sustainability Committee, and all the other volunteer groups to engage with them before the proposals come to you, so they can get the feedback from the people that have been involved in that work for maybe five, 10, 20 years. Okay?
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. Then we will go on to council member reports on meetings attended and announcements of future meetings, the city manager report, and comments. And I guess I start off this one with what I have been to. I attended the Alta Bates Press Conference hosted by the City of Berkeley and led by Mayor Rochelle Pardue-Okamoto of El Cerito. And Vice Mayor McQuade joined me for that. There was a holiday mixer with our business community at Mechanics Bank, and Councilman Pilch and, and Moss joined us there. And there was a mayor's conference that same evening where Vice Mayor McQuade and Councilmember Barnes joined us. So are there additional reports of meetings attended that people would like to share?
Yes, several other holiday celebrations with elected officials, I think, were in there. But probably most importantly was the EBC meeting where we discussed a possible, how to deal with the fallout of the PCI-- to deal with the fallout of the PCIA change. The PCIA has been, there's been numerous applications for rehearing of that rate change.
Councilmember Pilch, for the sake of people here who have never heard of the PCIA, could you just, in a nutshell, describe the issue?
Let me give it a shot. So EBCE is East Bay Community Energy, which is the new electricity provider. PCIA is Power Charge Indifference Adjustment, which means that organizations like us, who belong to a CCA, a Community Choice Aggregation Authority, are, we start anew and we start with brand-new energy contracts, which PG&E claims puts them at a disadvantage because they have bought these long-term energy contracts. So in order to even that out, something called the PCIA was introduced, so that the CCAs take their share of that burden away. Recently, that calculation for how much we are supposed to pay was redone, and it was redone favorable to PG&E, unfavorable to the CCAs, and the, there have been numerous requests for rehearing of that decision. So I am not certain at this point when the actual rates that PG&E will declare will come out. Normally, they would come out, actually, usually on December 31st, right at, right at the end of the year. That might be delayed now because of the rehearing requests. But nevertheless, the EBCE staff, it tries to foresee the future as much as possible and guess what the PG&E rates are going to be, because our rates are set based on the PG&E rates. And if the PG&E, PG&E gets to lower their rates because of this favorable PCIA decision, then we have to lower our rates with a lowering of revenue to the EBCE. So I sent the council a link to the staff report from EBCE that talked about the three things that could be done. Two of them are non-controversial, they are using internal staff rather than consultants One second, let me bring the actual report in front of me. Oh, yes, reduce overhead in general, delay certain local development activities, which would be unfortunate, because that means that those jobs would come later. Or actually adjust the original stated 1.5% discount for the lowest tier of energy. That change would, was discussed among the board as being sort of the last straw. The last thing we want to do is to have said that we will have this discount with regard to the PG&E rates, but now say, oh, well, we have to change that. Understand that it's not EBCE that is only affected by this, all the CCAs in the Bay Area would be affected, are affected, and I do not know what they're doing to mitigate these effects. Anyway, we will bring it back in January in a board meeting to talk about the possible action, and all of these things might be on the table. And I expressed in my comments that our, likely our, likely our council would be not in favor of changing that discount rate, and that would be a big, that would, that would be not honoring the original intent or the original direction that EBCE, original promise that EB gave to its rate holders, its potential rate holders. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. It sounds like something we might need to agendize in the near future. Any reports?
Sure. On December 6th, I went to two different things. The first one was the more fun event. It was a presentation at SPUR in Oakland on the proposed A stadium at Howard Terminal and what the thinking on that is. It was essentially, if they can pull it off, it'll be a very interesting baseball stadium. Afterwards, I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission. The most interesting item on that agenda was something on what the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the kind of broad organization that controls transportation funding for the nine Bay Area counties, is proposing to do about housing and the lack of affordable housing in the Bay Area. They have some pretty far-reaching ideas that would change many things. A super brief summary, they're proposing sort of two parts, or actually three parts. One is to protect and preserve existing affordable housing by doing just cause eviction legislation, doing legal aid for tenants, or having some kind of process for legal aid for tenants. And then there's also building more housing, and this is some of the things that we've heard about for a while now. Basically, cutting down on cities' ability to overzone transit areas and other places so that housing is not built. In the end, the final part, which was in some ways perhaps about scary for most cities, is that they're now talking about ways in which transportation funding that goes out to cities could be held back or controlled in a way that if cities aren't meeting their housing goals, we won't be able to fix the potholes quite as easily. So that's a super oversimplification of that whole thing, but if anyone would like to talk to me after the meeting or at any time, I'm happy to explain further.
And this has enormous repercussions for every city.
Enormous repercussions.
And is something that we will definitely take up in conjunction with our strategic planning, which I'll, at the end of the meeting, I'll be talking about how the strategic planning process will be undertaken. Councilmember Barnes, do you have any reports?
Sure. Following up on MTC's CASA, you know, we've had three meetings, one every week, so I don't think I mentioned this. So let me just go ahead and say, I did go to a meeting of a group called Livable California, and where the main item of discussion was MTC's CASA compact, which I think is a serious problem. It also imposes taxes on all of us, including incremental sales taxes, parcel taxes, and some taxes on businesses. But CASA is very controversial, MTC is, in my opinion, not a very functional organization. And this is a power grab, and I think it's something we ought to be very concerned about. So there was also a discussion of MTC and CASA at our, the mayor's conference. Most of the people were not very happy with MTC, and I think MTC heard that. So that's something we need to pay attention to going forward. And the final item came up for me, and I want to alert the council and folks here about it. I was at the League of California Cities get-together, which was in Oakland. I was talking to an Oakland City Council member, and they did something which I think is a bait and switch, and is distasteful, and possibly will have repercussions for us. There was a measure, there was about a $200 a year parcel tax called Measure AA in Oakland, that the voters were told required a supermajority vote. It was technically voter-initiated. It only got 62% of the votes, everyone assumed it was not going to pass. But then the council voted, without agendizing it, that, they weren't sure legally whether it ever needed a supermajority vote or not, so they declared it, declared victory and passed it with a 62% vote. Then they realized they hadn't agendized it, so they had to call another public meeting to actually agendize it, to make it official. Now there's a huge backlash. San Francisco, by the way, has done similar things, but they told the voters, they thought legally they needed 50%, they weren't sure.
We probably should keep it, we're not agendized to talk about this, or, but...
Well, this has nothing to do with us, per se, this is Oakland. But I will just say, I am very concerned, because here in Albany, I think we're very careful to make modest proposals, and they build trust and get them passed with voter, you know, votes that even exceed supermajority requirements. So the fact that Oakland is playing fast and loose with these rules, I think, can come back on us, it damages all of our credibility. So I hope there is more discussion among local governments about this going forward.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry. That's okay. I attended the sort of post-week United Against Hate meeting. I was at the ACT meeting and the mayor's conference. I also attended the Everwin Home Leadership Board, the leadership breakfast at the Alameda County Food Bank. And I also want to point out what's on the screen right now, which is the announcement for point-in-time count, which is the county homeless count, which will be January 30th. I put some postcards out in the lobby, if you're interested in participating in the count, let us know. We try to get a handle on how, exactly how many people we have in our county and in our city experiencing homelessness. And the way they do it, the way we're going to do it is to count early, early on the morning of January 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight. I'm so sorry, city manager report, my apologies.
So please feel free to get supplies for sandbags, they are available at Ocean View Park, and the bags can be picked up at our fire department. We also have one more event where staff will fill sandbags for those in need of assistance. It will be on January 5th, from 10 to 1:00 p.m., again at the Ocean View Park parking lot. If you need assistance out, and you can't make that date, please contact our neighborhood services staff. Also, the last of three rent review workshops will be held on Saturday, January 12th, at the Senior Center at 11 o'clock. And I'd also like to direct your attention to the screen, I am reintroducing a service program, Albany Cares, formerly known as the Albany Resource Volunteers. Community access to resources and services is our new phrase. Basically, cares, we're linking services to folks in need of services. And we have a new part-time neighborhood services coordinator who is staffing this program, Anne Marie Heineman. And the actual service hours of the Albany Cares program are on Wednesdays and Fridays from 10 to 1:00 at the Senior Center, the annex next door to the Senior Center. I'd also like to welcome two part-time office assistants, one at our finance counter, Julie Gilmore-Tong, and one at our administration counter, Mariana Valdez. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have no presentations tonight, we go to the public hearing on the Economic Development Strategic Plan implementation. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, I'd like to introduce our contract planner, Jean Eisenberg, who will be delivering the staff presentation.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Nason and members of the council. Tonight, we're talking about implementation of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. This was adopted just over a year ago, this plan. So this is the agenda for my presentation. I'm going to talk about the Planning Commission's six meetings and the process that they went through, as well as our outreach process, go through the proposed revisions, and then the next steps. So the plan highlighted the importance of the restaurant and retail businesses in the city as major tax generators for the city, and identified policies and programs to retain and continue to attract desirable businesses. The key focus of the zoning ordinance update that we're talking about tonight relates to this specific program foresee about business attraction. So this calls for revising allowed uses, the design review and permit process, parking ratios in the zoning ordinance's commercial districts, to remove obstacles to commercial development. So specifically, we're looking at ways to streamline the review process for those types of businesses, including looking at reducing off-street parking requirements and the list of allowed uses in individual districts. So our objective is to, as I said, to streamline the review process through the zoning ordinance, but we want to be mindful that we're trying to encourage well-designed retail and restaurant uses, desirable types of uses that the city wants to see, and that we're tailoring these revisions to the purposes of individual districts. If we think about Solano Avenue versus San Pablo versus the CMX district, which is around Cleveland Avenue and the Frontage area, these are very different districts. We have more walkable areas of Solano and more auto-oriented uses, excuse me, auto-oriented districts on the western half of the city. So the strategic plan itself included a more robust community outreach effort, including meetings with business owners, property owners. There was a resident survey, a project website, and a public workshop particularly focused for residents. To supplement that, and complement that, I conducted six additional interviews with folks who use the code on a more regular basis, so staff, commercial brokers, commercial property owners, retail tenants, and architects, to understand some of the pinch points in the application and the development review process. So the idea here is that the zoning changes that we're recommending and that we worked on with the commission are really contextualized within the local community stakeholders' needs. So the, some of the findings are summarized here, as well as in the report. They talked about issues around use permits, which can add time and expense to the process, desire for outdoor seating, for loading areas, as we see more delivery needs, excuse me. And then this idea that, particularly on Solano, that most of the development activity that we can expect in the short term is more about tenant improvements, that we're not going to likely see major redevelopment on Solano, whereas San Pablo Avenue might have some more new construction and redevelopment of existing properties. There was a lot of discussion around parking, some comments that the 90-minute parking limits generally made sense, some concerns about, any ideas about instituting fees or parking meters. And then this general agreement that the existing parking survey and waiver process doesn't really make sense, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we get into some of the key issues. So the Planning Commission meant six times to talk about this zoning framework, and ultimately made a recommendation to the council to approve this ordinance on a three-to-one So the key issues that we're addressing here, first was looking at the relationship between the types of uses that the city and the community desires according to the economic development plan, and the levels of permitting that's required by the code, so thinking about a by-right use versus a minor use permit or a major use permit. So the code often requires the same level of permitting across the three commercial districts. As a result, there's really not a lot of hierarchy reflecting the city's priorities about where a certain type of business should go. And so the commission considered uses requiring administrative versus this decision-maker review, and thinking about what's appropriate for staff to review versus what should be reviewed in a public hearing with the commission. Additionally, we looked at beer and wine versus full alcohol service when part of a restaurant, right now they're treated differently in the code, but we don't really have any evidence that there's differences in terms of impacts, if you think about noise or other potential impacts. And then lastly, looking at the changing nature of retail, both locally and nationally, so the shift from more stores that are selling goods to more service-oriented uses and to In terms of parking, right now, when there's a change of use proposed on an existing property, it can trigger an increase in required parking, even when there's no additional floor area or other improvements proposed. Some other issues, we looked at some data that was previously gathered on Solano Avenue to understand parking occupancies. Generally, the parking occupancies are less than 85%, which is generally seen as an acceptable level of parking availability. The only exception to this is on Solano and the adjacent side streets between the Berkeley border and the Bart tracks, especially around... border and the Bart tracks, especially around Santa Fe and Carmel Avenue. And then lastly, the zoning ordinance specifies a specific parking ratio for each commercial use definition. So if you look in the code, there's about two pages of specific parking ratios. So from one space per 200 square feet for a restaurant to one space per 800 square feet for business services. Now, this makes some sense if you're thinking about San Pablo Avenue or the CMX district, where visitors tend to park in a single location. They go to Target or they go to an auto body shop on San Pablo. It makes a little less sense on Solano Avenue, where folks tend to park once, visit multiple places, where you have a higher concentration of businesses. So again, our attempt here is to align policy with the district character. So before I launch into the ordinance, this was really the framework that we look at when we looked at consideration of zoning changes. So cities can encourage certain types of development in amenities by setting regulations that make it easier to do the right thing and disincentives for doing the wrong thing. So this can come in form of process, such as allowing ministerial permits for uses that are desired, or in the form of relief, if you think about certain development standards or parking requirements to encourage certain uses. On the other hand, higher review thresholds and more narrow development standards can act as disincentives. So we can use tools like performance standards to regulate hours or required findings to ensure compatibility with other uses. So the next three slides are the three sort of buckets of the contents of the recommended ordinance changes. So in terms of use regulations, first, looking at updating the purpose statements for each district, again, to reflect the land use classifications in the recently updated general plan, to reflect more contemporary uses and the character of each of those three commercial areas. Second, adding use definitions for some of these more contemporary uses that the city's seeing, tutoring facilities, some custom manufacturing, food and beverage production. The city's been seeing breweries, distilleries, those types of hybrid uses that are both production and retail spaces. Third, establishing more of a hierarchy across those three districts, so aligning the permit requirements for the desired types of uses on Solano versus in the CMX. And then lastly, creating standards for specific types of uses, such as requiring retail operations at the front of any of those hybrid types of businesses. So if you have a custom manufacturing business, making sure you have window shopping and merchandise at the front of the space and the manufacturing in the back. So our next bucket is specific use regulations. So currently, minor and major use permits necessitate that staff prepare or the commission adopt required findings. So notably, if we're starting to move uses from major or minor use permits to a more of a by-right, a permitted use, then we're eliminating the public hearing process and we're eliminating those required findings. So instead, we're recommending some specific performance standards. So instead of those subjective findings that would be required, instead, there's specific performance standards for, these are the hours of operation for gyms and for restaurants that serve alcohol. And then lastly, the commission recommended a major use permit for chain stores, which we've defined as 100 or more business establishments across the country that want to locate on Solano. And so the idea here was that we're creating findings to ensure that storefront design, that signage design was compatible with Solano, that it maintained that kind of character that Solano has, rather than potentially just what you see is what you get in terms of a chain store business like Starbucks or something else. So one specific change that I wanted to highlight for, the commission was concerned about ground-floor offices on Solano in particular. And so this is just a slide showing an excerpt of the zoning change, such that the ground-floor office uses on Solano would be required to obtain either a minor or a major use permit and would have to have windows on the ground floor. So, you know, no sort of window coverings or to sort of encourage that visibility from the street. And so specifically, offices, the way the code currently defines offices, there are two categories. So general offices are the types of businesses where you can just walk in a real estate office or a bank. And so that those would be permitted with a minor use permit on the ground floor. Offices professional, which is more, you'd have to have an appointment, it's a chiropractor or an architect's office, those would require a major use permit. And part of that is that we're suggesting that those be on upper stories, really, that they don't necessarily need that kind of ground-floor frontage of visibility. So our last big bucket is parking. So the key changes here, first, allowing staff to determine an appropriate ratio for a use that's not listed in the code. Second, working with the city's transportation planner and one of the city's on-call transportation consultants, we boil down the pages of use, excuse me, the ratios for individual commercial uses into two rates for Solano Avenue. So one rate for restaurants, one rate for all other retail uses. And again, this is really more of a contemporary practice for how many communities treat neighborhood service-oriented streets like Solano that tend to have more street parking, are more walkable, and have a higher concentration of retail businesses. Next, the exemption of change-of-use requests. So right now, when a change of use is proposed on an existing property, again, it can trigger an increase in the required parking, even if no additional floor area is proposed. So for example, a landlord is shifting from a retail use to a bank, that carries a higher parking ratio. And in an example of a 2,000-square-foot space, this could increase the parking requirement from five to seven spaces. The problem is, on many buildings on Solano, there's actually nowhere to physically put that parking. And so that's when this waiver and parking survey requirement gets triggered. The fourth item, currently, the zoning ordinance exempts the first 1,500 square feet of ground-floor retail building in building area on Solano and on San Pablo. So this provides an incentive for ground-floor retail versus non-retail uses and for smaller tenant spaces. So we're just proposing here to increase this exemption, to increase this incentive, particularly on sites that are constrained and may not be able to provide, physically provide parking without demolition or other changes to the site plan. And then lastly, many commercial properties, particularly on Solano, again, were constructed prior to the current parking requirements. So the code currently allows for adjustments for uses in existing non-residential buildings with a series of findings, which require a major use permit and preparation of a survey. Staff goes out and identifies parking availability and occupancy, generally within 500 feet of a subject site. So here, we're recommending elimination of this requirement for small businesses up to 2,000 square feet to help streamline this review process. So this chart from the staff report just summarizes what we might see with all of these parking changes. It's a little hard to predict. You know, in some places, some of these changes could lead to an increase in the amount of parking, some could lead into a decrease. But the purpose, again, of this project is not to reduce parking requirements, per se. It's to streamline the process for applicants that are coming in to build retail businesses. And this is just a snapshot of some of the more recent retail and restaurant projects that have come in to request parking waivers and then have completed parking surveys. You can see that most of these businesses are fairly small. There's only one that's approaching 5,000 square feet in that first row, but the bulk of these businesses are 1,500 square feet and below.
What is CUP?
That is the conditional use permit required, so the major use permit process, based on the type of business and the request for a parking waiver. The council did receive two correspondences, which we can address if you'd like, one from a planning commissioner and one from a member of the public. And wrapping up, our recommendation is that you introduce the ordinance for first reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do members of the council have questions for staff? Councilmember Bilge?
I do. Sorry, Michael, did you want to go first? I seem to be being picked to all the time. Okay.
Sure. Go ahead. That would be great.
Well, I would like a discussion, since the planning and zoning commissioner, who raised some concerns, spoke with me and is the person I appointed, I would like to hear what his concerns were in his letter, or at least have a discussion of those. Well, I can start. And I think it helps to have specific examples. I think the concern is with this blended parking, that it cuts out any, or certainly reduces any public's ability to comment on the changes. And one example is, as you go northbound, I was just doing Blue Glove Crew this morning, the litter pickup. If you go, so if you go northbound, or eastbound, rather, towards the hills on the north side of the street on Solano, you come to the church where there's a Jazzercise studio underneath the church. And Commissioner Donaldson had pointed out that there were some issues with traffic that neighbors were concerned, and he felt that the fact that P&amp;Z could have a public hearing, increased communication, helped smooth the issue over, and that the Jazzercise folks in that church basement actually did make some changes that helped smooth the process out. Then under the blended parking that we're discussing here, there would be no public hearing, and that would just be done at the staff level. So that's one concrete example. So if staff or anyone has any comments, you know, I'd like to hear them.
So maybe I can clarify just a couple things. So the blended ratios in and of themselves would not trigger or not trigger the use permit requirement. So if a use required, still required a major use permit because it was a type of use that in the use table required that, it would still go to the commission's hearing. So the parking ratios in and of themselves do not trigger a hearing. But right now, you're correct. If there's a request for a parking waiver, then the survey is completed, and that's what triggers the use permit request. So I just want to make that one clarification.
I guess my point and my concern more generally is that different businesses, historically and in practice, have different amount of traffic involved with them. For example, 1600 Solano was, my son's orthodontist office, as it turned out, but he was out of there by then. But this practice wanted to move on into Albany, and there was all sorts of discussion because, being a doctor's office, it had more, higher parking requirements, and there was these issues of, do we stack the parking or whatever? And eventually, that move for that office fell through, and I'm not sure what went wrong, but there was no orthodontist office at 1600 Solano after lots and lots of hearings in P&amp;Z. So would a specific example like that be affected by these changes? And as far as the Jazzercise studio, under these changes, would there have been any public comment required for the Jazzercise studio to have gone in?
So in regards to Jazzercise, we've established provisions within the draft that outline performance standards. So for Jazzercise to operate without a conditional use permit, they would have to adhere to those standards. If they wanted to go beyond that, for example, operating hours, they are then subject to a conditional use permit. And I also want to highlight for the council, there's a big distinction legally in terms of conditions we impose between a parking survey versus a use permit. We actually have discretion through the conditional use permit process to impose conditions related to operating standards and practices. We don't have that discretion at all with the parking waiver process. And so the slide that we included, just as an illustrative point on the offices, where now a use permit is required, we actually have more discretion to impose operating standards that we currently don't have with the parking process.
Does that include, I mean, you have more discretion, but does that include the possibilities for public input?
Yes. So whether it's a minor or major use permit, there is a public hearing process. We do notify property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. And at a staff level, if we have, if we're aware that there are going to be concerns related to the process, we kick it up to the commission. It's a more formal setting. There's five people objectively looking at the project request. And we've done that on residential remodel applications that may seem routine, but there are extenuating circumstances.
So just to be clear, the minor use permit is effectively a hearing that is just conducted at the staff level, and major use permit goes to P&amp;Z?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Moss?
Yeah. I had kind of a mix of questions. I was, one thing I was curious, how did the number 100 come in for chain stores? It could have been 10 chain stores. It could have been 1,000 chain stores. I'm just, was curious as to how you sit on 100.
It's a good question. The commission actually started at 10, and part of that was the model that San Francisco provides, which their threshold is 10, and then decided that 10 seemed too low, that really it was, wanted to push it to businesses that really were more national. They considered 1,000, but landed on 100. So I don't have a database answer for you, but I will say they bracketed pretty far from 10 to 1,000 and settled on 100. And part of it, let's see how this works, and then, you know, maybe it's something that gets changed.
So a follow-up to that, if Safeway were to decide to do something again, could we then have the power to say, this looks too much like a Safeway store? Because it has probably at least 1,000 stores spread across the country.
So the idea there was that we have a couple specific findings that the commission would have to make for such a chain store. And it specifically gets into storefront design and sign review. So I can give you an example, when the Starbucks went in at UC Village, essentially their architectural package, it looks kind of like a menu of options. You know, they pull sheets in and out of that architectural package depending on where they are. And so this gives the commission a little bit of discretion to suggest some changes that make it look more like Albany and a little less like the standard Starbucks package. So in the Safeway example, the same thing there. And because it's required findings, it is a little bit more subjective, and therefore the commission would have a little bit more discretion.
Okay. Thank you. So there's other changes that I presume will be looked at at some point. This is sort of initial thing of parking and some of this process, looking at the process of getting a permit. But if, particularly on San Pablo, it may be that on Solano, what we're mostly going to get is tenant improvements and not a lot of big changes. But on San Pablo, we could get developments that want to come in and go for more height, you know, and setback changes that we currently don't have. Is it intended that we're going to look at those further down the line?
So that wasn't part of this process. We really didn't look at development standards, pushing development standards outside of the specific changes to parking in terms of streamlining the review. There may be other plans to look at standards outside of this, but for the purposes of economic development, it wasn't considered here.
Good evening, councilmembers. The short answer is yes, absolutely. It's something that we want to look at, and we're developing internally right now, just talking among ourselves, how we want to approach this. But for 2019, we'd very much like to bring to you a couple of different options for you to consider on how to address particularly San Pablo Avenue and be able to modernize some of the code requirements to meet some of the region's new priorities.
You know, looking through the agenda, through the packet, there was a reference to some of the things going on in Berkeley. And I don't know if this ever went into effect, but there was talk, at least at different points in Berkeley, about a vacancy registration fee. points in Berkeley, about a vacancy registration fee as a way to get landlords. You know, most of the things we're talking about are carrots to kind of get businesses happy more quickly. But it's conceivable that a small stick might help also in the case where we have vacant stores that just don't seem to ever get rented out or go for, you know, many, many months. Was there any discussion about that?
Here in Albany or in?
In Albany, yeah.
It did not come up with any of the stakeholders that we talked about. It's certainly something that if the council wants to consider, including here or in this ordinance or elsewhere, we could do that. But it did not come up amongst the commissioners.
Well, I think, at least for me, in the larger picture, I think that's something we might want to consider. And then, kind of aligned with that, as I understand it, if you're in the upper end of Solano, the parking ratio is, in general, is 1 to 500 square feet, one parking place if you're in Berkeley. If you're, once you cross that line, somehow we need more parking in Albany, so we've lowered it to 400, or at least the proposal actually is to raise it, but it's still lower than what's going on in Berkeley. And I think there's a difference between 300 here and, oh, 300 in Berkeley and 200 square feet here for restaurants. So we're, you know, I'm wondering why we couldn't, you know, since we share both San Pablo and Solano, was there any discussion that maybe we should share parking regulations?
So yes and no. The commission did discuss it, but we didn't, so as you said, the current restaurant ratio in Albany is one space per 200, and we didn't change that standard even with this blended ratio idea on Solano. So again, we weren't reducing parking standards per se, and then we did this overall one per 400 catch-all. The city of Berkeley's requirements are lower, as in they generally require fewer parking spaces for retail establishments, and we didn't try to necessarily mimic that. Based on the sizes of spaces that we're showing, the 1,500, 2,000 square feet, you round up a little, you round down, you know, it's a difference, but probably just a difference of a space or two. The one key item that the staff report did point out is that Berkeley recently also adopted this exemption for changes in use. And so on Solano, they would, as of last week, and add 30 days or whenever their second reading is, they're exempting changes of use from additional parking.
Right. Okay. And then I was also curious, I saw a reference to parking meters and other fees, which I would presume kind of refers to maybe neighborhood parking permits and the stakeholders' input, but was there any further discussion amongst planning and zoning regarding those?
Yes, we looked at several different scenarios because the code actually does consider a parking district. So you could pay an in-lu fee and develop a parking fund, and the city would then go in and develop a parking garage. It wasn't a very popular idea, and so that idea of a parking in-lu fee where you couldn't provide parking on site was rejected. There was some talk about parking meters, more among the stakeholders than among the commissioners. There just seemed to be a general distaste for charging for parking. And then there was, there was understanding among the property owners and retailers that community members are concerned about employees parking on side streets and parking in the neighborhoods, so some interest in residential parking. But again, this is about streamlining development review and not about parking, figuring out parking management, which, you know, is very clearly in your general plan to try to do that, you know. And so maybe that's something else that someone else wants to take on, but we only focused on the things that, you know, you're seeing, the items that filtered through the commission.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pilch?
Go ahead.
Okay. Four items. You mentioned reaching out to local stakeholders in producing these items. Did that include potential people from, from, sorry?
I'm sorry.
People from outside of, business people from outside of Albany who might come to Albany and establish a business in Albany?
Only in that, the brokers that I spoke to work in several different communities. I didn't speak with retailers in other communities, although to be honest, since I'm a consultant, I do work for many other cities, and I did recently do a retail project on the peninsula, so maybe a little far for someone considering Albany. But, you know, I also work in Berkeley and El Cerrito, so in my head.
Okay, so that's actually something that wasn't clear to me. So you talked to brokers who do business in various jurisdictions. Okay. And how did you or staff or the commission prioritize the items that you were going to take up to present to us?
So it really drew very consistently to that program that I highlighted at the beginning from the strategic plan. So that strategic plan called for looking at use regulations, the types of permits required, looking at parking standards, and looking at those sort of specific use regulations. So that's how we ended up with those categories.
And did you, so you took most all of the recommendations from the plan or the priority items or?
I, you know, looking at this, we took all of these, we took all of these items. We looked at allowed uses, a little less on design review, but permits required and parking ratios.
Okay. No, that's, thank you. And you mentioned updating the purpose definitions for the districts. I'm glad you mentioned that because I didn't necessarily see that in the, in my materials, but is that reflected in the ordinance or whatever it is that we're going to ask to pass?
I'm just going to look up the page number. So on page 12 of the ordinance, I'm looking at the redlined version.
Okay.
Which is attachment, attachment one.
Okay.
Page 12. Specific purposes of individual commercial districts.
Ah, okay. Great.
So the additions are shown in red and the strikeouts are struck out in black.
Okay, thank you. I'll take a look at that in a moment. And then finally, I would like you to address the two emails that we received, both from members of the public who usually have very good things to say, very thoughtful things to say.
So I'll try and condense what I can, but I do think it's important to kind of go point by point in this. We can tackle Commissioner Donaldson's email first since it's a little more abbreviated. He expressed his opinion to the council on why he voted no, and throughout the process, he had reservations. He, I think, sees value in having the public process and having the opportunity for members of the public to come out and voice their concerns. And I think because there is that process, because it is something that has historically been in place in Albany, he's, he has reservations about seeing that modified or potentially eliminated in some cases, depending on whether it's parking waiver or particular use.
A quick clarification, you said that property owners within 300 feet are notified. That includes the residential property owners to the north and south on Solano, for example?
Right. As well as occupants. So if it's a rental property, we send the occupant.
Okay, so it's not just along the street, it's also 300 feet into the neighborhoods?
Right. So as an example, one of the uses that was up on the screen, a dentist's office at Key Route and Solano, that extended both north, on Key Route, north of Solano, as well as Key Route South. In regards to Mr. Larson's email, kind of at a high level, I just want to initially emphasize that we are doing this as part of the Economic Development Implementation Plan, so that was a separate process that did not involve the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that was part of a different stakeholder set. So our purpose in doing this tonight is to carry out what was previously approved by this city council as part of that adoption in September 2017. To drill down into specific issues, there was mention of the alcohol licensing and the proposed amendment to eliminate the use permit requirement for beer, wine, and spirits licenses for restaurant uses. So we had a couple of applications where existing businesses who have the beer and wine license, also known as a type 41, have decided that they want to have spirits as an offering. So they send their license to ABC, apply for the type 47. Our process requires that they pay upwards of $2,700, go through an additional six-week waiting process before they can proceed with their license change through ABC. The last one that we had, which was actually at the beginning of this year, was Everest Cafe. That caused them about a six-week delay, and it was a consent calendar item. We had zero public comment. So it's, the change from going from a type 41 that's in good standing to a type 47 where we have this public process and additional costs, I haven't seen much in the way of changes to those businesses, and in both of those cases, there were no changes to the operating standards, so the businesses continued to do business as they did previously. And just at a high level, ABC utilizes census tracts as their metric, and more than four licenses within a census tract is considered an overconcentration. So given the density that we have here in the inner Bay Area, it's not uncommon for most census tracts to be over-concentrated. There is a separate process known as a determination of public convenience or necessity in which our local law enforcement agency can weigh in on whether or not they have objections or support for the license. In general, when I've worked with the PD on this, they tend not to raise objections on this unless there was the potential for some really serious externality that would negatively impact the community. Jeanne, can you put up the slide with the parking? I think it's this one. During the planning commission review, we provided this table as a point of reference for the recent parking surveys that they had looked at from 2015 to the present. And in doing so, we wanted to highlight the square footage of the building, the use, and whether or not those uses are allowed by right or if they're conditionally allowed. And in particular, for the businesses that are allowed by right, this added, again, a $2,700 plus cost plus a six-week waiting period before these businesses could proceed with their tenant improvements. And actually, it was more like an eight-week period when you factor in the appeals window. So this does add time, and ultimately, as I noted earlier, we have no control over the operating parameters. We're looking at a very narrow purview when it's under a parking waiver. We're just looking at the data that is collected as part of that. I think Jeanne addressed blended ratios, so I will refrain from any further comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McQuaid, do you have questions?
I think the only question that I have at this point, there, I think I share somewhat of the concern of Commissioner Donaldson and also Mr. Larson, and I'm wondering if there's any, if there was any compromise that was thought of if you, as staff, understand that a change in use is going to possibly require like five extra parking places, if that could trigger a public hearing, whereas if it's only one or two, it would go through the staff process. Was there any discussion about that at all?
No, we didn't talk specifically about how impactful that could be. It is possible that with a really large tenant space, a change in use, if you were going from a one per 200 to a one per 800 square foot change, could trigger, you know, several more parking spaces. And part of that was that we still have this issue that physically, at least on Solano, it just wouldn't be feasible to fit those spaces in anyway. So then we're back in this loop of the parking survey and the parking waiver. Now, so this could exist on San Pablo Avenue if we're looking at a change in a tenant space there. And that, you know, in that case, you know, yes, you could be in a situation where, you know, you don't have as many stalls going forward if this ordinance were approved than you would, you know, a year ago under the current standards.
Is there any data on how many times a waiver is requested and denied?
In the seven years and four months I've been here, we've never had one denied. They routinely get approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, do we have speaker cards? No, but we have a.
We are some Albany residents. I appreciate taking time to answer my questions. I didn't really understand, I was embarrassed, I saw, I had three pages, and I didn't believe her, she was leaving, missed out on my comments. I did understand a response regarding alcohol. Our basic issue was that there's significant cost and delays. Charge less, move faster. And that's, no city provides, this particular, no city provides by permit full-service alcohol licenses. It costs $14,000 from ABC. Anyway, it's not a major point. My major interest was parking. I think the proposal here is to dummy down parking requirements. We will, we will prevent community development from assessing the impact of changes in use and parking. That's our new decision. We will, we're changing the current major use permit parking, major use process employed to determining a parking waiver to a minor use permit, and by doing so, we eliminate four conditions. One of the conditions is associated with the parking survey. I thought the city's attitude towards a parking survey is interesting. At several meetings, staff stated that the parking survey doesn't make sense where parking is physically infeasible. I disagree. I think, I think the parking survey provides valuable, objective information for the nearby businesses and nearby residents to allow them to assess the impact of parking, which will get worse as we, as, if our economic development process is successful. But even more importantly, I think it's appropriate for the city to stake out its authority to disapprove of a project for parking. We indicated we haven't done that. I recall it happening in the past, but we haven't done it in a long time. I assume that's because the parking surveys showed there was sufficient on-street parking. Good. That certainly should be a relief for the residents, for any of the participants. I think it's good policy to keep an eye on parking, not just turn a blind eye towards it. I think it's consistent with the Albany zoning ordinance. I think it's very consistent with Albany's general plan, which requires that, at least for San Pablo Commercial, that the planning development take into consideration the impact on parking on neighboring residential. So I would ask the council to look carefully at the proposed, as I say, dumbing down of parking requirements here and proceed cautiously.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this issue? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for comment. Why don't we start with Pete?
Okay, thanks. Parking.
Good thing.
Always the big issue here in Albany. You know, I don't have a lot of comments. I think I'm prepared to vote for this tonight, but I would say a couple of things. I, I think these are modest changes. I know that for a lot of people in Albany, tampering with parking or allowing businesses not to have to provide it is a radical idea, but that's not the case in a good part of the Bay Area on cities perhaps on either side of us, I would say. My own preference would have been to align our parking standards with what's going on in Berkeley, since we share both Solano Avenue and San Pablo Avenue, and go to that one per 500 square foot ratio for general stores. per 500 square foot ratio for general stores and one for 300 for restaurants. You know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of different goals here, and I think that sort of the immediate goal is that we can encourage a lively, healthy business community, which will benefit everybody in Albany. The other part of that is something that's mentioned at the very end of the staff report, the whole idea of sustainability. And some of our sustainability goals are that we're trying to get people to walk and bike and make a more, you know, walk-friendly kind of business section. I don't know if we keep, if we keep setting parking places out there for people, or keep requiring parking lots or establishing parking, that does, that seems to go against that goal, I would say. Plus, it makes doing business a lot more expensive. I, I would hope that in, you know, it's not happening this time around, but I would think that the more logical way of looking at this is to mitigate parking issues that might arise in neighborhoods with really taking a look at neighborhood parking permits, you know, particularly on those blocks just off of Sonoma or affected by what's going on in San Pablo, say on Cane's and Adams. I think that would be a more logical way of doing it, rather than requiring businesses to come up with parking spaces that are almost impossible to come up with. This has been an ongoing discussion ever since I've been involved with government or local government here in Albany, and I think it'll keep going on for a while. But, okay, those are my, my comments, quick comments.
Thank you. Do we have other comments from the council?
Okay. Ricky?
Okay, I'll jump in. You know, I'm fine with this. I do sort of want to go back to something. I think, Pete, you said much earlier, which doesn't relate to this, but encouraging planning and zoning in the new year to really look at the height limits on, especially on San Pablo, but to really put that high on their work plan.
Boring them?
Yeah, one story. All underground, no.
Some people might not know.
Yeah, that's true. Otherwise, you know, I think, I think this is fine. We can't, when telling somebody how many parking places they need if there's no place to put them is, it's sort of an exercise in futility if, you know, we can tell you whatever we want, but if there's no land to put the parking on, there's no reason to be wasting a lot of time on this. So I would, I would support it with that caveat.
Councilmember Pilch?
I also support this. I would say that, by the way, I do remember that the development at 1600 Solano Avenue, I believe that came up before the Planning and Zoning Commission when I was on the commission, and I believe that they, the current, the regulations at that time required 18 or 20 spaces, something quite, quite a large number of spaces, and we were straining to fit it into that development. I'm guessing that's one reason why that development was never built, but we, I don't know for sure. I think if we're more in alignment with the surrounding communities, I think that's a good thing, and I think that's where we're going. And I think, as staff pointed out, these regulations come directly from the Economic Development Plan, which was commissioned by us, or which was approved by us, and then this is the part of the implementation of that. So I think staff's doing the right thing here. I would say that, as I read this, this actually took quite a bit of my time this weekend in reading through this dense material, so thank you for your presentation, which helped clarify, helped me to step through it. At one point, it says, "Development along Solano Avenue will primarily be tenant improvements, not complete redevelopment, so any zoning revisions should reflect that." That got me to thinking is that that could be true, but the one exercise that we've never done as a city is to say, what exactly do we want Solano Avenue to look like? What exactly do we want San Pablo Avenue to look like? And I won't, I won't be too much of a broken record about calling for, what's the word for it?
Specific plan?
The, what is it?
Specific plan?
Specific plan, thank you. I have drilled it into your heads, calling for a specific plan, especially for San Pablo Avenue. But I think that that might be a way to think about going in the future, is to decide as a city, as a council, that we want these streets to look like that. If we're successful, if this pushes us over the 85% to 95% parking occupancy, then we implement parking meters and neighborhood parking permits, which is what all cities do in this case, that's how you regulate parking. But in lieu of all that, that's something I think we should get to. I think this is, these are steps in the right direction. I think there was one more item I wanted to talk about, which I think was just that making sure that staff is cognizant of neighborhood input or input from surrounding businesses and/or neighbors, whether or not it actually fits the definition for minor or major use permits, whether or not something might actually come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that staff use their discretion to bring it to Planning and Zoning if they see that there's a need for a lot of input or for people to be heard. I definitely feel that that's, allowing stakeholders to be heard is still an important part of all this. So I think, yeah, that'll do it for me. Thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted to ask one clarifying question. If there were to be on, say, on San Pablo Avenue, a big change in property, in property use, to where there was a, say, a large housing complex going in or something, over 2,000 square feet, that, that's separate from this, correct? I see, and that's fine. Just want to make sure I'm understanding this and not making a mistake here. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, the first major comment is, remember, this is just the first reading, so I really would perhaps more than typically remind the council that this is an ongoing process. This is not a done deal till a second reading. So if there is some issues that come up, or we think of things, or people talk to us about things, we still can incorporate them into the second reading. Just saying, I mean, it's not a done deal tonight. You know, about, first of all, also, I want to second Nick's comment that it would be useful, I think, to have some kind of meeting where we really hash out what we want Solano and San Pablo to look like in the future. That involves height limits and other issues. I don't know if we would have time for that. We do have a retreat annually. That may or may not be appropriate for that, I don't know. On the issue of parking permits, I do recall, we've been through this before, the trouble with some of our commercial districts is they have businesses that are active in the day and businesses that are active at night, and it's hard to structure a permit process that, you know, that accommodates both of those. People sometimes are coming home and trying to find parking at the same time. Out-of-towners are wanting to eat, you know, at a restaurant on Solano, so the timing is, can be subtle. The timing issues can be hard to work out. One thing I think that our Solano Avenue merchants would tell us is that Solano Avenue is a destination shopping area. It's, you know, it's good to emphasize walkability, I'm fine with that, but they would say, there's a lot of people who shop on Solano who do not live within walking distance of Solano, so we have to keep in mind that some people don't have the option of walking. If they want to come to Solano, they do have to drive, and they do have to have places You know, I was glad the staff did give us some, I understand that this speeds up the permitting, which can be incredibly frustrating for a small business to get going. I appreciate that. There is one issue, and I can give you a specific example, that I don't think was touched on here, and I don't want to belabor it now, because all, I can deal with this afterwards, because there will be a second hearing, but I want to bring it to council's attention. And that is when a business thinks it's going to get a certain amount of parking, and then there's a change, and often on San Pablo, that's due to the state, because that's a state highway, and we don't control everything along that corridor, Caltrans does. And there's a process they've gone through to, you know, count parking spaces and get all that taken care of, and then Caltrans goes and changes the parking on them, or AC Transit. A good example is that little, if you're on San Pablo, walking northbound, right after the intersection with San Pablo, where we're putting in a bus stop now, there's a little used clothing store, Closet Karma, something like that. And they got their parking, they were all jazzed about having to, you know, a certain number of parking spaces in front of their business, and they disappeared when we moved the bus stop. I was in favor of moving the bus stop, and some of this as well, that's just the way it goes. But, you know, I'm sort of wondering how we accommodate issues like that in these plans when we require, you know, retail ventures, you know, put together some kind of plan for making sure there's adequate parking, and then a year later, the parking changes. I don't understand how that gets worked into this process, and that's all I want to say about that, but I'm just going to need to learn a little bit more about that. And everything else I had questions on has been addressed, so I'm good.
Thank you. Anything more?
Okay, I'm going to make two very quick comments, and one is just a really big-picture thing, and that is, if you go to these regional meetings that we attend and read the publications and so forth, one of the things that is just drilled into you is, density is coming. It's coming whether we like it or not. It's coming as an economic matter, it's coming as an environmental matter. We are going to become more dense and less parkable, and we all have to, we're all going to struggle with this. Businesses see parking as their economic lifeblood, and residents see parking as essential to their lifestyle, but this is going to change, and I think that we have to, we have to start moving in that direction. The other is about silos in our, in our procedures, and that is, this has gone through Economic Development Committee, and it's gone through Planning and Zoning. It hasn't gone, to my knowledge, through transportation. If it went through transportation, they'd be here saying, we need a lot less parking. We need, we need a very different approach to this that is far less favorable to providing parking. That's my guess, I can't speak for them. But I hope that going forward, as we come up with things, the transportation community, I've learned, is not really very much aware of this, and when they're looking at the complete streets plans, they don't realize that there is this economic development plan, and there is this zoning process going on. So I hope that over the coming, coming months and years, we will try to get more cross-fertilization, I guess, of our different commissions and committees. Maybe even joint meetings at certain times of certain commissions might be worth giving a try. Those are my comments, and I'm happy to take a motion on this.
We introduce ordinance number 201901 for first reading. Is that sufficient, do you want all the parts in there?
I think that's fine.
I'll second that.
Okay, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Mason?
Yes. And we shall move on. We have no unfinished business. We do have new business, however, and that is the update on the Lower Cordoneses Creek Maintenance and Restoration. May we have a staff report, please?
I'd like to start with a quick overview of Cordoneses Creek, just for those who might not be familiar with it, and then move into some of the specific items in the staff report. First, Cordoneses Creek is the southern border of the city between Albany and Berkeley. And for the portions of the creek that we're talking about this evening, from San Pablo Avenue to the railroad tracks, the primary property owner along that stretch on the Albany side is the University of California. The planning and implementation of the restoration of Cordoneses Creek has been going on since the late 1990s, and has been involved, both the cities of Albany and Berkeley and the university. The original overall plan for the restoration of the creek began in 2001, actually, it began in the late 1990s and was prepared and completed in 2001. And three phases of the project have been completed, beginning in 2004 through the 2010 timeframe, basically from 8th Street downstream to the railroad tracks. And that's been part of, developed under the, or restored under the framework of the partnership of the two cities and the university.
Can I just clarify?
We have this diagram, 8th Street down, so this is upstream, downstream, upstream, downstream, upstream, downstream.
That's correct.
8th Street down to the East Shore Highway is the ball.
The middle and the lower images are what have been completed. The, as part of that restoration, there have been repairing habitats created, bicycle, pedestrian shared-use trails constructed, and community resilience has been improved by reducing the exposure to flooding, particularly for the UC Village student housing and some of the businesses on the Berkeley side. In 2004, the city entered into a three-way memorandum of understanding with, again, the three entities, for maintenance and restoration of this segment of creek. And I won't go into the details of that, but to summarize the requirements of the MOU, it calls for an annual meeting of the three agencies, and establishes responsibilities and funding for creek monitoring, landscape maintenance, flood control maintenance, trail maintenance, maintenance of culverts and bridges. And again, in 2004, funds were set aside into an escrow account to cover some of those costs of maintenance. I should point out that there are issues that were not anticipated in 2004, most significantly is the presence of encampments and the associated debris cleanups that need to be done for that. And those are something, as you know, is perhaps the biggest challenge to our waterways these days. You've received some correspondence this evening regarding implementation of the MOU, particularly with respect to the escrow funds and public meetings. I'd like to touch on that briefly and give you a little bit of history. From what we can tell, up until 2013, because different staff people were involved earlier, the three agencies met on a regular basis. There was a process, a little bit clunky, but still there was a process for Albany to invoice the University of California, who would then go to the city of Berkeley for approval, who in turn would send a request for funds to be released from the escrow company that's been holding the money and sent to Albany. These three-agency meetings and these processes appear to have been working pretty well. I don't know exactly the schedule, but I do know that during that time, there were some active restoration projects going on up until, until 2013. And at that time, there were changes in key staff people at all three agencies. I won't go into the details for the other agencies, but our case, the passing of Judy Lieberman, and then the career change for Anna Bernardis. So the people who were involved at that time were no longer involved. And so as a result, frankly, the, there was a period of time when there wasn't active implementation of the MOU. During this time, the funds were, have been, were held by a formal escrow company, and that resulted in the, our financial that resulted in the, our financial systems not tracking the funds as we would normally expect. So our financial system here in Albany, at least, would pick up the funds as they arrived from the escrow company and not track the escrow account itself. And I suspect some of the inconsistent answers that representatives of Friends of Five Creeks have received over the years that have been very frustrating to them, answers from different people, were, were probably the result, to some degree, of this unusual arrangement, combined with the fact that, that some of the people who were involved at that time are no longer involved with the project. Discussions between the three agencies resumed in late 2017, and by the early part of 2018, we have begun to meet on a regular basis. We've reviewed the MOU in detail, and we are working extremely well together. I have to be honest with you, I'm pleasantly surprised that we've really established a rapport and collaboration between the two cities and the university, which doesn't always happen between different agencies, but we have a good working relationship, and we now have a lot of people in each agency who understands the, the agreement, and we meet on a regular basis. Importantly, with respect to the funds, the funds were transferred ultimately out of the escrow account and now are held by the city of Albany, and we will be able to produce the standard reports on expenditures and fund balances and so forth that we can produce for any of your funds. In response to a request for an annual public meeting, we would like to propose that if, which did come up in some of your correspondence received, that the annual meeting be part of a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, and this would be an opportunity for us to review a previous year's activities, plan for the upcoming year, and then, again, provide any financial reports that would, would be helpful for that discussion. In the meantime, as a procedural step this evening, if, if the council so desires, we would request the action to simply appropriate, allow us to appropriate the funds pursuant to the MOU. We're holding the funds, but we don't have a budget appropriation to go hand in hand with that. Next, I'd like to touch on the maintenance plan for a moment. You have in your packet a draft of the maintenance plan. This came out after a site walk by the three agencies in August, and we agreed as a group that we needed to make sure that our maintenance activities were consistent across the different agencies that might be doing work, and that all of us are in compliance with the regulatory requirements. We retained our subject matter experts, Restoration Design Group, consultants that have done a lot of work for all three entities over the years on Cordoneses Creek to prepare the, the attached draft vegetation management plan. And we'd be happy to take any comments from council members of the public and, and consider that as we move forward, working on that plan. We hope to meet with regulatory agencies on the site, do a sit-toe with regulatory agencies in early 2019, and then ultimately submit for permits, which are required for certain types of, of maintenance activities, particularly tree trimming and anything that might be perceived as affecting the, the habitat viability of the creek. We also have set up a protocol for public reporting of issues at Cordoneses Creek, and we're in the process of having, what we'll be, end up using is the city of Berkeley's 311 system, but it will be available to anyone on either side of the creek. So you don't have to figure out whether you're in university property or, or in the city of Albany or city of Berkeley or whatever. There will be one, and there are signs being created for this, so there will be one point of contact that goes to the city of Berkeley's 311 system. The 311 system will send it to a specific person, a professional in the city of Berkeley's Public Works Department that participates in our meetings, and that person will designate who among the, the agencies need to respond. In addition to having someone who's always there to answer the phone at the 311 center, it also has value in that they have a tracking system to make sure that there's follow-up to each of these requests or, or reports. In the meantime, we do attempt to be completely responsive to, to the reports that we receive from Friends of Five Creeks and others. We do spend, when we do meet, we review those. It's a challenge. As I mentioned earlier, the homeless encampments in particular create issues that are hard to keep up with. Tons of material have been removed from that area over the last year, but it's, every day there's something new, it seems. And finally, with respect to the proposed Phase IV Cordoneses Creek restoration project, we have in your packet, again, a set of plans that is in, under development. This is a project that has been in your capital improvement plan. The last plan that you saw and approved in, in March of 2018 included a partially funded project for a larger stretch of the creek, based on public input. We, we agreed that it made sense to break out the project into smaller bites, including a new Phase IV that's more focused on the area between 8th and 10th, which we're closer to being able to fund. It's probably going to be a little bit more than what we have currently in your, your CIP, but we'll be bringing the CIP back to you in, in 2019, and we'll, we'll try to align the funding with the updated project costs. To summarize that project briefly, it involves bicycle and pedestrian shared use path, a 10-foot-wide path that would be ADA accessible, that basically gets people around the Little League fields. So you could get from, say, the, the backside of the Belmont Village project, around the Little League fields to the Little League fields, and around the Little League fields through the University Village maintenance parking lot and out to 8th Street. And from there, a crossing at 8th Street and improved crossing at 8th Street, so a pedestrian or bicyclist or whomever can continue on the creek trail if they wish, or go into the, the road and bicycle network in Berkeley. There also would be some minor vegetation management as a part of that. The process that we've used to develop that plan started with targeted outreach to the specific entities that have been on the ground in that particular area. And as listed in your, your staff report, there's a number of years of history, in addition to the work that Friends of Five Creeks have done for many years, Eco City Builders, an organization run by a gentleman that was in Berkeley, Richard Register, Albany Little League, obviously, UC Village as well, and a nearby property owner that, just kind of as a volunteer, I think, and a passionate guy for the creeks, does a lot of work in that area as well to try to help, help keep the health of the creek going. And what we wanted to do in that targeted outreach is to make sure, as a, as a starting point, that we didn't develop a plan that would disrupt what they've been doing or want to be doing in the near future. We have developed that plan, we've met with them twice, first to kind of get that input and then to show them what we did. It continues to be a draft, it's scheduled next to go to Traffic and Safety Commission tomorrow night for their comments and review, and ultimately would come back to you as a, as a potential CIP project in 2019. There are some other things that are part of that project that, including, in particular, improving some of the, the fencing along this edge of the, of, between the Little League field and the creek. Right now, it's not a very friendly place to be. There's chain link fences, and I'm not talking about the baseball field fences, but there's a chain link fence between the area where baseball fans might be standing in the creek. Clean that up and put a more attractive, appropriate fence, and also some sort of interpretive feature. The alignment of the trail itself, there's some flexibility to that. The two elements that came into the, the current draft alignment is, one, to try to avoid removing any more trees than necessary. There are some that have been there, been planted by citizen volunteers years ago. And the, the second was to make sure that it was a safe pathway as a shared use, and it's not going to be a good route for a high-speed cyclist. There's probably, particularly on weekends when lots of Little League fields, a lot of Little League field use, it probably is a slow bicycles or maybe even getting off your bike when you get close to the fields. So tightening up some of the, the corners was, was the idea, but we're always welcome to, to hearing other perspectives on that, and we can, we can continue engagement with, with anyone who's interested in talking about that. So with that, I'll, I'll pause and be happy to answer any questions if, if council has any.
Are there questions from council?
I have one question. I know you're working with, with UC, and I know that UC is really a moving target as far as their sort of overall plans. I know they're talking a lot about housing, not only here, but throughout Berkeley. But has, has that piece of it been part of this discussion? I'd hate to see us do a lot of wonderful work and then have another arm of UC turn around and go, "Oh, but we have this plan."
Well, we'd haven't, no. We're working with the planning office with this particular 8th to 10th stretch. I would not anticipate any attempt to build anything because it's in a, it's in a flood plain.
Right.
And there are some areas that are more likely to be potential housing sites around the Apparatus Bay.
Right. Don't want any surprises.
Yeah. That, that would be much more likely to see some, some, and I haven't heard anything, just to clear, make sure that when, I'm not starting a rumor, I have not heard anything officially or unofficially about that. That's my own speculation.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, the, I think the concerned property owner who helps out is Dan Dole, who's the ironworker there, and Paul McKenzie is the guy who repairs Stratocaster guitars, who is also in that space. I ride bikes with both of them, so I get their perspective on this issue too occasionally, mostly from Dan, who is, I think he's, really loves the creek, you know. My concern is with, as you pointed out, homeless folks moving in there, and they are now on that, that area on 10th Street there. And there's a jurisdictional problem, I think. Is it, is it us, is it Berkeley? How do, so there, I'm just wondering how you deal with that. And in general, it seems like the cities have more complicated, you know, permitting pro, not permitting processes, but requirements to go through as to what they can cut when. And I don't know if, how you coordinate that with volunteers who can, you know, cut whatever they like, but who often, you know, are also very concerned and knowledgeable about the creek. So I'm just wondering how all this works.
Well, first of all, with respect to any reports that we receive about homeless encampments, there's, as I mentioned, there's really good collaboration, and so to give you an example, when there was a targeted cleanup near the Berkeley facility, the transfer facility at the end of Second Street, we coordinated with Target to do a cleanup of their property the following day. We tried to get it on the same day, but it didn't work out. But anyhow, so it was, it was to collaborate on both sides of the creek is, is just one example. We, I know the police departments communicate among themselves pretty directly. They are, whatever maintenance activities that they may request still need to be consistent with regulatory requirements, and so what we're going to try to do is to develop a plan that provides the visibility that makes people feel safe to be there and provides the ability for effective patrols and still meet the ecological importance of protecting the creek and shading the creek for the, for the water temperature. And it's, it's just, this is where it's really been working well, that we have good collaboration, we have people that, you know, we talk to each other, we return each other's phone calls, all that kind of stuff is working really well.
Other questions?
Yeah, a couple. What's the difference between debris and trash? I saw that on the list. Trash is something we might pick up weekly, but debris, we'd only pick up annually? I think it's, is in those charts and...
And, and I, I'm sorry, I use the word interchangeably.
I, I would normally, although they, they, the expected work plan or the proposed work plan does seem to have separate, you know, classifications for the two.
So, yes, we use the terms debris and trash interchangeably, but my understanding is debris would be debris in the creek, like large debris, like large pieces of wood, which sometimes are actually beneficial ecologically, but they can also create a flood hazard. And so once a year, this UC actually is responsible for going in the channel and removing certain debris that would be a problem for flooding before the rainy season. So I think that's the difference.
Okay. And that kind of ties in, and you're, Claire, you're probably the, the right person to ask about this second idea. You know, it's expected through climate change, we'll be getting more intense storms and more heavy runoff. How is that factored into any of this planning? Is, is there going to be an increased look at, at that kind of debris you're, you're describing? You know?
It's a great point that we should talk about, we should talk about at our annual maintenance meeting, to talk about how things change each year, and it's also part of our hazard mitigation plan to discuss sort of longer term. Also, we're in the process of a climate adaptation plan, but so far, we haven't had a large discussion about how flooding hazards may increase.
Okay.
I just want to quickly add to that. The other issue is with sea level rise, is that the tide comes up, the creek's further than it used to, and we're going to have two king tides coming up, I think, the 22nd and 23rd, seven feet. So, you know, might be worth going down there and looking, but the creek on the El Cerrito border, I'm blanking on the name.
Cerito.
Cerito Creek, oh, that was easy. It was right in front of my face, that's why I can't ever find my reading glasses. I know that's been an issue in the past there because that creek tends to back up all the way up to the, the site for the, the school for the blind, especially if there's debris in the creek. So I don't know if that, the problem with high tides at El Cerrito Creek is also going to be a problem at Cordoneses, but something else to consider.
Yeah, well, something we should pay attention to, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Sure. Does the MOU specify a lead agency?
No.
Okay, that seems like a problem. And what are the ongoing monetary obligations of each agency?
So the MOU does specify, there's this, the balance of funds is roughly $450,000 that for different activities, different agencies have responsibilities, and for some of those things, we can be reimbursed from, from that. And for other things, as an example, homeless encampments isn't enumerated into that, into the MOU, so we're not, at this point, there's no discussion about amending the, the MOU to add homeless encampments to it. So each agency is taking care of its homeless encampments with its own resources.
So there's a certain pot of money, and once that's exhausted, that's the end of the MOU, or?
Hopefully, that will be a few years down the line, but that will certainly be a point in time where we would want to revisit the MOU. We may want to keep the framework in place, but, but have to come up with something different for funding.
And two related items. Why did you say that there were, I think you mentioned there's some sharp corners in the, in the path, which I see on the drawing as well. Did you mention why, why the sharp corners? Was it just a, just because of the design specified it that way, or because designers thought that looked good?
So to, to bring it up, there's a, there's a sharp corner, obviously. Well, to get everybody oriented, this is 8th Street on the left side of the screen. This is Cordoneses Creek. This is 10th Street, and then the Belmont Village project is up here. This is one of the Little League fields, and this is the, this is the parking lot for the UC Village staff and maintenance activities. So part of it is just fitting it in without damaging or removing trees, and the second, so that's part of what's happening here, is there are a couple of trees, you can see the note, "Keep the oak tree." And it also helps kind of serve as a, as a calming measure, as you, as a bicyclist were to be coming, either, you know, particularly going westbound as they're approaching 8th Street, which is, is, as everyone knows, kind of a busy street right there. And then the other area I think that's pretty tight is right around here, around the Little League fields. And... League fields. And this is an area where, again, there's a lot going on. And while things can be moved around, if we wanted to, it would probably involve more of a landscape impact. And it's also an area where there might be more pedestrian and baseball-related activity. So some of those curves can be smoothed out if necessary.
Yeah, certainly, it's not a path where you'd want high-speed cycling, as you say. But there, since this is part of a network that would allow kids to get from Albany all the way to the ballfields on bicycles, we should consider it carefully. So would there be another chance to review this plan?
Yes, of course. This is, as I said, this is a traffic and safety tomorrow night, and...
Oh, I think actually I heard that that exact issue was going to come up. Okay.
And we can, we can continue, we have somewhat limited budget with our consultants, but if a staff, you would like us to do more targeted engagement or different types of engagement, we're happy to do it.
I just, I just wanted to just kind of know the trajectory for now, but it's going to traffic and safety. Okay, great. And that's it for my questions.
I'd like to address the letter that Susan sent this afternoon. I don't know anything about plants. I mean, to be honest here. But it does seem that there's kind of a push-pull as to what the Friends of Five Creeks, who are actually out there doing work, have knowledge, know what they're talking about, what they're suggesting and what is happening. How do we resolve that?
Well, I think we also, as staff here this evening, probably aren't the best qualified to comment on specific plans that Susan has raised. We have relied on our subject matter experts, the consultants that prepared this, and we'll ask them to, they have a copy of the letter now, and we'll ask them to reconsider their recommendations and to be able to explain that to you when it comes back, if there continue to be any inconsistencies.
Can there be a dialogue with Friends of Five Creeks on that so that...
I think there's something, I don't know if it's been scheduled, but there was an offer to walk...
Okay. Just seems...
No? I believe so, there was a walk.
Okay, well, I would like to hope that at some point, there's some dialogue in there. And it sounds like you're moving in that direction. And let me ask one more question, if I can put it into a question. One of the emails that we got today about the bicycle path with the sharper corners had a good illustrative picture of just kind of softening it with a little cement, sort of right at the corner, right at the right angle. I don't know if that would work, but maybe we could think about, could we think about that? Got to get into a question.
To answer your question, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for now.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have speaker cards?
Susan Schwartz and Ann Ogonosky.
That's the letter again. Thank you. I'm still Susan Schwartz, head of Friends of Five Creeks. I think you know why we're here. Last week, we were here talking about asking, pleading for low-cost, common sense mowing, which we had begged for since spring. It was really like being kicked in the stomach to open this agenda and see that these agencies had secretly, in last fall, adopted a maintenance plan that addressed none of our requests. Nobody told us, nobody talked to us, and obviously, nobody thought our thoughts were worth anything. The short history here, as you've had some of it, is that, yes, as part of restoration, the three agencies promised to hold yearly maintenance meetings. These elapsed. Albany's responsibility was to call these meetings. Albany refused our request that they resume them for a number of years. Maintenance fell apart completely. About a year ago, we were tipped off about the $400,000 sitting forgotten at UC Berkeley. After weeks of investigation, this turned out to be $450,000 set to go to UC in 2020. We began pushing for this forgotten money to go into a maintenance fund, and we began to regularly photograph the conditions and ask that things be done. Currently, yes, the money has gone into a maintenance fund, and the creek is much better kept. However, the incentives are still all wrong. These agencies are asking that you allow them to just carry on. They plan to hold their maintenance meeting in January, closed meeting, just them, no opportunity to comment, no report, and so far, no budget. Behind closed doors, they have adopted an ineffectual weed management ban. The things I've spoken up are a very small part of it. They have already made one very costly mistake, requiring repeated expensive cleanups, and now they want to use this fund to fence off that area, which will be ugly, may not work, and there's been no discussion of that or of why this is happening. Anybody who says that you didn't anticipate the homeless in 2004 is nuts. I've been on these meetings since 1998, and we all knew there were camps there then, it was on the Transcontinental Railroad, and there are camps now. The problem is worse. It's all our fault that the problem is worse, but this is not unexpected. It's, they've been there since, basically, the United States lost its industrial base along the creek. Okay? I'm going to go over time. I apologize. Cordenese's will always be for referral to these overworked agencies. The temptation will always be to get as much money as you can with as little responsibility.
No, we don't do it that way, but Susan, you can take another minute.
Thank you. There is no emergency that requires a vote tonight. You should ask the staff to come back with measures that will create structural incentives for maintenance to continue without Friends of Five Creeks constantly being on their back, for this money to be spent efficiently, for there to be proper records, for there to be meetings that are connected with what really happens, not some sweet little meeting in parks and recreation, input into what these agencies are secretly deciding. Thank you. I hope you will not approve this tonight.
I'm Ann Ogonosky. I am a resident of El Cerrito, but I have been volunteering with Friends of Five Creeks for at least 19 years, and much more so since I retired, it's on a weekly basis for the last almost six years. My biggest problem with this proposal is that it was developed, the maintenance plan was developed in secret. In this day, when there is so much talk about behind closed doors deals and lack of transparency and public involvement, that's just a flag for me. And I want to say, from the point of view of a volunteer, I am not, I'm not an expert. There are people I work with in Friends of Five Creeks who are experts and very knowledgeable, even though they're not paid for it. And I do think there is a value to be had from hands-on, consistent experience. Yes, we might not have all the answers. Sometimes we have the really good questions, though, and I would like to hear those addressed. I think it's, we couldn't pay, this $450,000 would be gone if the volunteers were paid at minimal wages for what we've done on Cordenese's Creek. And so I'm just, I'm just asking that we somehow be able to come to the meetings and to ask our questions, to make our proposals. I looked up the etymology of maintain. It's to hold in the hand. Please don't keep Friends of Five Creeks and other volunteers at arm's length. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other cards? Does anyone else want to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there, and bring it back to council, are there comments?
Now, my comment's a question, but is there a reason that the meeting in January can't be an open meeting?
The Parks and Rec Commission meeting?
No, the meeting of the agencies.
I can't speak for the other agencies.
Okay, that's fair.
Other comments?
Okay, I'll make some, although I wasn't quite prepared here. But I totally appreciate Susan Schwartz and the other Friends of Five Creeks that have shown up tonight and are so impassioned on this. Creeks are, you know, very magical places, and I can kind of get where you're coming from, and you guys have put in so much work on all this. I think there have been missteps by the city, but I would also say that this is sort of a unique situation in that this is two cities and UC that are all trying to coordinate together. And I think, in that perspective, I think it's particularly challenging to get three public agencies to actually work together. Two cities, possibly, two cities and UC Berkeley, very challenging. I would also say, having had some experience with creek restoration, but not in the Bay Area so much, but more in more rural climates, it's a tough thing because it's this organic process of creeks, particularly when they're not piped like they are for the most part around here. But that creek will change, and over a long period of time, will kind of, will want to meander. And so whatever we figure out for the next five years could be different in, you know, 10 years as the creek moves. So it can be very frustrating that way. I would, I would hope that we could, you know, if we move this forward tonight, that we can really look at this idea that, that through Parks and Recs, but perhaps onsite visitation, we could have a once, at least once a year, visit by all the stakeholders, not just Berkeley, Albany, and UC, but Friends of Five Creeks and some of the other groups that are, you know, interested in what's going on in this section, to take a look at what's happening and how well we're kind of living up to the goals that we're trying to set. So if we move this along tonight, I would hope that somehow there is that kind of onsite public looking at what's going on can be incorporated into this.
Thank you.
Susan, I have a question. Can you, can you go back up to the podium? I just have a question. I want it to be on public record.
Yes.
So there's, I mean, I see, to some extent, the city is stuck between a rock and a hard place. It has to deal very officially with the other public sector groups, and then there's a group of concerned volunteers, and we really respect the work you do. So my question is, have, as you reach out to us in meetings like this tonight, do you also do that with Berkeley and with UC?
Yes. UC is impossible. They don't have public meetings. But we've spoken twice at Berkeley Public Works, which, they have more commissions. It's almost impossible to speak in the council, but easy to speak, and twice at the Parks Department on a very narrow issue. The Public Works has written a long letter supporting our position, which is one of the reasons why this has all happened, that they agreed with us on the creation of the maintenance fund and various other, and various other issues. However, Albany is in charge of the money. And if anyone is going to make sure that it is handled fiscally responsibly, it is going to have to be Albany, and that is your job to make sure of that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
That's good, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I have mixed feelings. If we don't act on this, my concern is that it's going to go in the back burner again for some number of years. So, and given the complexities, my tendency is to want to approve this plan and go forward, but I'd like to believe that there's some way to get the Friends of Five Creeks more involved.
Well, just to clarify, you're not asked to approve either the maintenance plan or the, or the Phase Four plans this evening. This is just here for your review and your comment. With respect to the appropriation, we're just trying to put something into our financial system so that we would be able to expend funds out of it. But if the council wants more time, we can postpone the appropriation part of this, and it's simply really an information item. We absolutely want to advance the project. And unless you direct otherwise, we intend to continue to bring the project to you for a potential capital improvement project, and we'll continue to work with Friends of Five Creeks. I appreciate their frustration, and, but I think we can work through, frankly, I have a different, maybe more optimistic attitude. I really think we can work through all of these issues. I really do.
Thank you.
So the staff recommendations are that we review and comment on the Creek Management Action Menu Memo, authorize expenditures of funds for creek monitoring and maintenance. So are you saying, Jeff, that we could authorize, funds have to be spent, and this is just, is this just a formal thing we have to go through for the city to be able to spend the money? It doesn't obligate you to, I mean, I'm not, if we didn't approve that, what would the outcome be?
So you're, the city is contractually obligated to spend the funds pursuant to the MOU, and that's a decision that the council made in 2004. The appropriation is just that every year, you have to reappropriate funds to do your different municipal activities. So this is just kind of activating, in a sense, maybe another way to put it is activating the funds now that they are in our control. If there's no action, like I said, we will hold the funds, we'll track it, there won't necessarily be expenditures out of it until we come back and ultimately you approve.
Okay. All right. So you can't expand it until we approve this item. And then comment on the 75% plans, which I think we did a little, to reiterate my comment, the, it would be nice to smooth out some of those curves on the path, sorry, some of the angles on the path. So, yeah, kudos to Susan and Friends of Five Creeks for tracking this and bringing this to our attention. So often, the work of citizens is necessary to bring these things to light, unfortunately. And certainly, they are experts on the ground, and I have direct experience with, working with them, volunteering with them. And they, their input, I feel, has a lot of weight and is very important. It sounds like this MOU is a little bit problematic. It doesn't have a lead agency, and this seems like the agency that has the least amount of staff is in charge of organizing everything. And UC and City of Berkeley get to just kind of sit by and give funds out or pass funds around. It's not that simple, I know, but it does seem like we're doing a lot of work for that. I wonder if in the future, something like a joint powers authority would be a better way to do this. Anyway, so we're stuck with the MOU for now. I appreciate Susan's call for structural changes, and some, I think, you know, I'm also looking for some guarantee that, that probably can't be guaranteed because we have the MOU, but some structural changes that will make sure that this always moves forward, we don't forget about it again, and that Friends of Five Creeks is involved at every single opportunity that they can and should be involved in. So I would ask, I would make one recommendation, that Susan and/or some Friends of Five Creek rep be present at all the meetings and be reviewing all plans. of Five Creek rep be present at all the meetings and be reviewing all plans to the extent possible. And also I would ask staff, what is we, what is, what can we as council members do, if anything, to help this along politically? Is there any, anything that we can do?
I think we can convey your comments this evening to the other agencies.
Okay. I'd like to know if my fellow council members are okay with my comments about involving Friends of Five Creeks and more in the process as much as possible.
Well, we can ask, but I'm not sure we have the authority to insist that that happen.
I do feel like I need to say out loud, and I apologize, but, you know, I think we as staff do need to reserve the right to have a conversation with the City of Berkeley or the university without Susan on the line. That, but in terms of keeping her completely engaged and involved and aware of decisions, we're.
But I mean, that doesn't preclude you offering to say, oh, we're gonna have a meeting, can we include Friends of Five Creeks?
Correct.
Yeah, in general, I mean, more formally, there should be some requirement of some kind of public meeting, or public meetings in this process, right? We're spending public money.
And that's the proposal, to bring it to the Parks and Rec Commission, where you would be the normal framework for doing that. We have lots of meetings every day that aren't public meetings.
Sure, understood.
And we need those meetings in order to actually implement projects.
Now, I just need a clarification here, because it's about the word authorize, and this is a little highfalutin', but at the federal level, there's a two-step process. There's an authorization and there's an appropriation. There are different committees. Just because money is authorized, then it has to go to either a budget or a Ways and Means Committee typically, in which the money gets appropriated and is really spent. So authorization doesn't mean that there's any plan to spend the money, it just gives you permission to spend the money. So when you use the word authorize here, is it, does it mean the same thing that it would in many federal or state governments, that there's a secondary process where the money is actually appropriated?
Again, in this case, I think we're kind of using the terminology interchangeably. We don't have that two-step process here. The council approves a budget and then, in a public meeting and all that, but, and then we, we have the ability, under normal circumstances pursuant to contracts and all sorts of other things, and approve plans and so forth that the council might see. But in terms of the budget authority, we can proceed on. You'll still see contracts that exceed certain thresholds, you'll still see plans before they go to bed, and you'll have your, your normal oversight of city government.
If we authorize tonight, there is no downstream meaning, sorry, double entendre, there's no downstream need for you to bring this back for us to say, yes, you have our permission to spend the money. That just follows from the decision we make tonight.
Correct. Of course, you can say you want to see it again and we'll bring it back as much as you want us to bring it back. We're not trying to, not trying to hide anything from the council members of the public.
No, and it wouldn't be, I mean, as Peggy said, I'm, it's plants, I don't really know, I have no technical expertise in this area at all. So I don't feel like I'd have much to add, you know, beyond what we've discussed today, other than, you know, trying to keep people happy, right, which is sort of what city councils do.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
I think, obviously, the three agencies historically really dropped the ball on this. And I also think, and that's, that's a bad thing, it shouldn't have happened, but we need to acknowledge it, own it, and move forward. And I think that's what you're trying to do, and I think all three agencies are trying to do that. The fact that we now have the money, you always want to be in a position of holding the money, in my opinion. We can monitor, we can see the reports, we'll be able to look at it. I think that's really important. Setting up whatever, it looks like there's procedures in here to report on what's being spent, how it's being spent, all of those things, I think, I think that's all great. I would like to see the Friends of Five Creeks have a role in this. I totally understand that agencies need to talk and do their thing and that's fine, but I think it needs to be somewhere in there that the expertise of Friends of Five Creeks is, we value it and that we want to access it. And I think if we're all in agreement with that, we're good, we're good to go with what you have here.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, that's what I was saying. And one concrete suggestion, I just looked at our e-notification page, does not have a creeks item. So if we could add that, we could send in notices about documents and meetings through the e-notification list as well and keep Friends of Five Creeks as well as any other interested parties more, better informed.
Yeah, I think those suggestions make a lot of sense. And, you know, I don't know if I said it before, but I really like the idea of Parks and Rec being kind of the lead commission on this. I think that's, it's true, that's exactly where it belongs. And, you know, and plus the other idea that it's not just talked about in a meeting that's in this room, but also there's some, there's at least some opportunity, at least once a year, to go to the creeks and look at it with everybody there.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, I have a brief comment. You know, I agree with everyone about the importance of the work of Friends of Five Creeks. And I think that we need to think of them as both a funder, they have certainly done labor that is worth vast sums to Albany over the years, and also as an expert. They are the on the ground, the boots on the ground, and they see what actually happens. And it is very important that we, we consult with them. However, I do think we want to, I agree with those who say that Parks and Recreation, we just expanded their charge and we're going to change their name to Parks, Recreation and Natural Areas, as we discussed, specifically to bring the creeks and the bulb under the purview of Parks and Recreation. And that's, that's one small institutional step that I think will, will help with this situation. And I hope that Friends of Five Creeks will work with, we have some, you know, we get really excellent people wanting to be involved in that. And I think they'll be eager to learn about the creeks and to be involved in supporting the work. With regard to the overall process, I think it is important for Friends of Five Creeks to understand that it's the council that directs the staff's attention. And there is never enough staff, time, and attention to do all of the things that we would all like them to do. So to the extent that you are frustrated at what has happened, the buck stops here. And I would say, you know, that I can, I would personally take some responsibility for this because I think that one of the things that happened after Ms. Lieberman, not long after Ms. Lieberman passed away, the homeless task force was convened, the personnel on the waterfront committee changed. And I personally was a huge activist for getting staff attention to the bulb because the situation had become desperate. We had, people were dying, I mean, we had a person, you know, die in a tent out there. We had to address the housing and the ecosystem issue that we had on the bulb. And I think that that very likely pulled, the available bandwidth for natural areas got pulled to the bulb and the creeks became neglected. I don't think that it was any lack of interest on the part of the staff or lack of willingness to work with the community. In my experience, there is deep interest in ecosystem matters and in, in working with the community. So I just want to say, I think, I hope that you can let go of any sense that nobody is listening to you or wanting to work with you. I also want to say, you know, let's look at the bigger picture. There are great things happening. I mean, we have this new, we will have a new charge for the Parks and Rec Commission. You got, thanks to you, we have discovered this money. The city has just passed Measure M, which is going to provide potential management funding for a broad spectrum of things. There may be possibilities for the creeks in that. I've spoken already with Mayor Arguin, and he's very interested in the issue and indicated he would join a walk with Susan Schwartz, if we can arrange it at a time that works for him. We've got a lot, there's just a lot of wonderful opportunities opening up. And I hope that we can put some of the bad feelings of the past aside and, you know, embrace this with enthusiasm about the future, given it's tough, given that, you know, it's always, it's always gonna be a challenge. And we're lucky you're there, but we're here too, and hopefully we can get a better partnership. With that said, on the specific funding issue, I'm gonna suggest, I want, I want this funding captured in our financial reporting system. That is crucial. On the other hand, I don't really want to see it spent before the Parks and Recreation and Natural Areas Commission has had a look at this management plan and budget and taken the input of Friends and Five Creeks and have it come back to us and see if we've got some alignment on what this plan should look like and how we should spend this money. Does that create any, are there any bills that need to be paid or, you know, commitments that need to be made with respect to this money in the meantime?
I think that for the time being, we'll be fine. I do think it probably needs to get resolved in the next few months, certainly.
The sooner, the sooner the better.
The sooner the better. It's not gonna happen the next few weeks, obviously.
No.
Have continued discussions and by the end of the, certainly by the end of the fiscal year, we want to have all this sorted out so that we have a good, clean accounting and we don't carry, no city should carry the expense longer than necessary if we're sitting on some money that's not being used for its intended purpose.
Yep.
So what happens between now and, as far as maintenance, or, I guess it's maintenance, do the creeks are just sitting there or are there projects that need to happen in the winter or early spring?
Our work is gonna continue. And the design, the, I'm not the expert on the timing of all the maintenance activities, but we will continue to maintain the creek and we'll figure out the, how to manage the funding of that.
That was, that was my concern.
If we need to come back sooner rather than later, we'll figure out a way to get back here sooner rather than later. I don't want to try to figure that out on the fly up here without.
I just didn't want to make it so you couldn't do what had to be done.
We don't want to become another, yet another bottleneck.
Yeah.
Council members are never bottleneckers.
So Rochelle, Mayor, you're suggesting that we take no formal action tonight?
Well, let's look at our, our action and, and our requests. I think that we've reviewed the Management Actions Memo, and we've asked that it go to the, to the Parks and Recreation and Natural Areas Commission and then come back to us. And that will give Friends of Five Creeks a, an opportunity to get all of their proposals considered with care in a public meeting. And we also, and I guess the same would go for the 75% plans. Would you take those to Parks?
Yes, we could, I think with its new charges, appropriate that they look at all this.
Both of those go. Now, with regard to authorizing the expenditure of funds for creek monitoring and maintenance, now we have funds that can cover that without the escrow. I mean, we, the question we keep asking, and I'm still a little unsure about, we don't want to stop anything from happening. You will?
We don't have a dedicated funding source for that. That's what the MOU entails and what, that's what the funding that we're discussing tonight is. If you see the agenda item, it's for, for creek management, which includes the monitoring and the maintenance. So in effect, we would be borrowing funds from ourselves and then in need of reimbursement. But with the Management Actions Memo, in terms of the maintenance that it's included in there, we wouldn't necessarily be able to implement anything. Also understand that there's three agencies involved, so dictation by the council is certainly welcome, as well as the Park and Rec Commission, but actual changes get a little confusing because there are three agencies involved. And so typically, the process for the creek monitoring and maintenance is we retain a technical consultant and work with them to provide the expertise on what needs to be done with any given riparian area within that creek. So that's usually where we, then we then budget through with the identified maintenance needs for that given time period. So conceivably, yes, something may be put on hold if we don't have the funding available to backfill this account. That if it's basically not being put into effect by the council at this point in time, we would need to try to offset with other funds.
I think I'm having trouble understanding all of this because we've got the three agencies. I'm not sure putting it into Park and Rec and Natural Services or whatever they're called, is, is really the right thing if we've already got three agencies involved.
It adds another layer of, of community engagement, but given the expectations in this community, and certainly in Berkeley too, with transparency and public engagement, we'd like to, we think that's probably the most efficient place to do it.
Will Berkeley want to put it in their comparable commission?
I don't know. That, they would certainly have that prerogative, I suppose.
I can imagine that's by bureaucracy here.
That's a risk.
But it's not, it's not a risk we can't avoid. I mean, if Berkeley says, wait a minute, we want to put it through our process, then we are facing a JPA. And I, I'm less enthusiastic about the JPA idea because I've been representing Albany on the JPA for the ball fields. And the JPAs are remarkably free of transparency requirements that, that we have to follow. So I think the Albany Committee is a great place for this. Berkeley may not see it that way, but my suspicion, given their issues with homelessness throughout District One, I suspect they will actually be very pleased for Albany to, to kind of take the lead on this. But we will see. And in the meantime, we certainly don't want to hold up action that needs to be taken. But it does, it seems unlikely that we're, this, this fund is supposed to last for years. And it just seems unlikely that we're gonna spend money that, we're gonna spend a large percentage of this before the Parks and Rec Commission has been able to look at it. So that, that would be personally my, my preference.
I support having Parks and Rec look at it, and I support what, what, what matters to me is that we, we track the expenditures, that we see, even if it's an item in the consent calendar, that we see the, the progress as it goes along, that we, you know, my, my issue is if we authorize and then we never see an accounting of that again, that, that's, of course, that would be bad and that's what I want to avoid.
Yeah, and there's the accounting issue, but the different issue is spending money on things that we shouldn't do. That's, I think that's what we're trying to make sure we do not do.
Well, but, and I think you can look at it conversely too, is not spending money on things we need to do.
That we need to do.
And that's why I'm a little hesitant not to authorize the funds at this point so that you can do what needs to be done now.
Yeah, I agree with Peggy. I mean, you know, the reality is stuff keeps growing whether we want it to or not. And I'm personally uncomfortable with you authorizing this tonight and having you work to find a better home for this in Parks and Rec, because I don't think we're a very good home for this, because Parks and Rec will give it more attention.
Now, do we, do we need a formal motion? Perhaps we should ask our?
Yeah, if the council's going to approve the staff recommendation with regard to the appropriation of funds, yes, I would recommend a motion.
Okay, thanks. That's my two cents.
Someone want to make a?
Yeah, I, I think I would like to approve this tonight and work, you know, let staff work as quickly as possible to get Parks and Rec and, and natural, whatever, involved in this.
Areas, it's not that complicated. It's good.
I think we have to keep condensing names for our commissions committees or just call them by the, the letters. But, you know, I'm, I feel comfortable that, that if we authorize this tonight, that, you know, we can work out the details of how this is monitored along. And, you know, I think it's best to get going after.
And let's just be sure that we are entirely transparent, that everything is available for everyone to review and, and that we go ahead with Parks and Recreation and Natural Areas as soon as feasible.
Do you want to add that to the motion?
Add that a, that detailed accounting be provided publicly in the context of the, is that, of the, I don't think that we need a detailed accounting necessarily, but that a detailed accounting be made available publicly with the agenda packet for this item in Parks, Recreation and Natural Areas.
I think what we can also do is, I'm looking at our website right now, is have a much, much more robust presence for creek maintenance on our website, which would include that accounting, so it could be reviewed and researched at anyone's leisure.
That would be ideal. That would be just tremendous. Thank you.
Okay, so here comes a potential motion. I move that we authorize expenditure of funds for creek monitoring and maintenance in the Coordinisus Creek Fund, number 71236019, per the memorandum of understanding, and that we make sure that there is a public record of the expenditures of the funds.
And, and I think I would add to that, that as this process goes forward, that there's lots of opportunity for all the stakeholders, including Friends of Five Creeks, to be able to come and see what's going on. It's, you know, we're not talking about just a spreadsheet that's available, but also, you know, what, what that spreadsheet produced.
Okay, do we need to add that? Are you asking us to add that to the motion?
Yeah.
Ann's, Ann's looking a little.
I'm with Ann, what?
Ann, are you able to read that back or do you want to?
I, I got, I got Councilmember Barnes' part.
So, you know, as, as, as part of this motion, that we ensure that going forward, there'll be opportunities, at least if not on an annual, maybe biannual basis, to allow all the stakeholders, including Friends of Five Creeks, to be able to review what's going on at the site, not just a public reckoning of, of, of the funds, you know, on a spreadsheet.
Why don't you make a separate motion?
Okay, well.
That maybe has one sentence, not a.
All right, so let's, I'm sorry, Ann, can you read back?
Just Michael's part.
Just my part.
Okay.
And so we can vote on that.
Yes.
Okay. To authorize expenditure of fund for creek monitoring and maintenance in the Coordinisus Creek Fund per the MOU and that we make sure that there's public records of expenditures of funds available, publicly available.
Okay. And also the other two parts of the staff recommendation, the, well, I guess there isn't any need for anything on that. Okay.
I'll second Michael's motion.
Okay, Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Nathan?
Yes.
And I guess the next motion would be that going forward, that this process allows for at least an annual or possibly biannual visit to the creek by all the stakeholders to review what's been going on.
In addition to the stakeholder meeting that is called, the annual stakeholder meeting that's called for.
Yeah, at Parks and Rec.
Yep.
Okay, well, remember, we don't, we can't tell all the stakeholders what to do. We can't.
No, no, we're not telling all the stakeholders what to do, but that there's this opportunity to see what's going on, what's, what's happening.
Why don't we leave that to Park and Rec to take care of that piece of it? That seems like that would be what they would, one of the things that they would coordinate and organize. Why don't we give that to them? Maybe not as a motion, but just make sure it's in their work plan.
Okay, well, if we can put it in our work plan, then that, that might be the okay place for it.
It's noted by staff as well, and trust us that we've heard too loud and clear, and we will incorporate that into the Park and Rec work plan. And, and in the past, Park and Rec has done many site visits. We have, Waterfront Committee has as well, so it's not impossible to have a field visit. And just to follow up, in terms of the actual procedural change for the Park and Rec Commission, I will return that to the council at your, well, your first regular meeting in January, which will be your second meeting in January, to make the actual name in charge change because it is an ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, then I think we've worked our way through this. All right, thank you very much.
I'd like to move that we extend till 11 or 10:45.
Thank you.
Second.
We don't, can we do that by acclamation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we're all.
Now we get to fight over these.
Do people want to take a five-minute break or just keep going?
Going.
Let's hit, go ahead.
Okay, let's keep rolling.
Did you see the look on Craig's face?
All right, so we are up to, we, the next item of new business, item 11 dash 2, City Council Appointments to County and Regional Bodies. And I think that we got the most current handout on this.
I have to apologize though, so I gave you two spreadsheet, one with the yellow highlight on the title. That's a blank one for you to, it's a worksheet for you to fill in.
I see.
And then the one that doesn't have the highlight is the current, or what was appointed in 2018, for 2018. I have to apologize, I forgot to cross out Disaster Policy Advisory Group on the highlighted version.
Oh, yeah.
So we no longer need to appoint.
Oh, thank God.
That one.
Yes, very good.
What happened to that? We folded that into something else?
It was an ordinance change.
Okay, so on this one, I think I will, you know, as mayor, several of these are kind of, look like they're automatically in my purview. The ones basically, it looks like Councilmember Moss, when he was mayor, took on several of these and they stayed with him. I don't know why, when we last reallocated these, why that they did not move, but they didn't.
Well, it says that the mayor, you're referring to like Transportation Commission, A-BAG, et cetera. It says the mayor is the appointing authority.
Yeah, but, so there's an option for the, the mayor not to do it. I, I would like to do them. I, I should say, for Alameda County Transportation Commission, I know that's a very technical, very challenging one, and I'd like to be sure that whoever is an alternate for that is, has a strong interest and willing, willingness to come to, to the meetings with me as much as possible.
You're saying you want to do that?
Yeah, yeah, I definitely want to do that.
I will, I will just say that I'm still Keith Carson's alternate, which doesn't mean I go all the time, but I do go occasionally.
Does that create a Brown Act problem if my, if me and my alternate are both there and you're there as Keith Carson's? They're public meetings, aren't they?
I, I don't know that Peggy could be there both as.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
Place of view and.
No, 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 that would not be appropriate. What I'm saying is what if there's three of us at a meeting? Is that, is that?
That would only, that would only happen if the alternate showed up.
Transportation fundings here big time.
Either the, either the rep or the alternate is going to show up, so there's, there's only going to be two, two of us, right?
Well, the, I guess that's what I'm asking, can the rep and the alternate both go?
Well, they can, but they're not both going to sit at the.
Right. No, they're not both going to be voting, but.
They're not both going to be voting, but.
They can all be in attendance as long as it's part of a noticed.
Because it's a noticed public meeting. Okay.
I would love to continue as the alternate on that. In fact, I would, I had wanted to serve on the Transportation Commission. As you know, it's a great passion of mine, the transportation. If you are going to take it, then I would like to continue to serve as the alternate.
Are there others who wish to serve as alternate? Is there anyone else who wants to do that? No. Okay, well, that makes perfect sense then. Library, we don't need to worry about. It looks, is that right? There's nothing we need to do about the library?
Right, the board would give you recommendations if these individuals change, so we could follow up on that.
And they will change because my appointee is not there anymore.
Right. Okay. Then, so when we have a reconstituted library board, we'll come back to this. Okay. What about A-BAG?
I'd, I'd love to continue to serve there. It's actually very little time these days. They had one annual meeting in July or June, which I was not able to go to, and Michael served in my stead, but I think it's important to try to keep some representation there. MTC has no representation, so A-BAG representation is the only representation there we get.
You know, I'd happy to, I would like to go to those meetings. I'd be happy to either be the appointee or the alternate. It doesn't really matter. I think I can go as the alternate, even if Nick goes. I mean, I don't have to vote.
Okay.
I want, I think with this CASA stuff is going to heat up and I think we need to pay attention.
Aren't these public meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I could go.
Anybody can go, even if you're.
Right, but being the alternate means you might serve sometime as well, so.
Right, and I'm not sure the business meeting isn't open to the public, I don't think, but it's not critical. Does anybody else want to do it? If no one else wants to do it.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, I went to the business meeting when I was the rep a couple of years ago, and there wasn't, I don't think that was where the really interesting stuff was happening.
If, if you're okay with the same layout, Michael, I would, I would be, I would love to be the rep and you the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alternate, if that's okay.
And if they're talking about CASA, maybe we'll all be there. Okay, League of California Cities.
I'd like to keep that if I could.
Yeah, makes sense.
And I enjoy going to those meetings again.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily have to be the alternate, but Peggy and I typically go together.
Why don't we just keep it as it is?
I would like to point out, now that I'm retired, I sort of shirked my responsibility on these various committees because I just couldn't do them when I was working, but I'm not working anymore, so.
Oh, my goodness, we're going to have so much for you to do.
Still have a cat and a bicycle.
Yeah. A bike is the problem. All right. Waste management, this is, this interests me a lot in my green world.
Yeah, and I've, and I've.
And I've been the alternate.
I just got appointed to another committee on that, but, you know, I've, I've been on for a while.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like, can I give you JPA back?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want to be, well, does, who wants to be the alternate for waste management? Does anybody else?
I could do the alternate.
You'll be the, okay.
Since I've had some experience on that.
Is that all right with everybody?
There's one more meeting this month. Should I go to that meeting?
Why don't, yes, why don't we go together?
Okay, then I can introduce you as the, the next.
Alameda County Housing Authority.
Oh, it's, wait, so sorry, for waste management, it's Rochelle and then.
And Pete.
Okay.
Actually, the asterisk note with three asterisks at the bottom, it has.
Does not allow alternate.
Four asterisks at the top, but I think they, they are the same thing.
Sorry, supposed to be.
Does not allow alternate.
Okay, no alternates.
Yeah, the, the Housing Authority, you have to be appointed by the Board of Supervisors. I would be happy to give that up. I know Peggy had talked about wanting to do that at one point.
No, I didn't say I wanted to do it. I said you were nice enough to take it on.
Oh.
And when I was a little fruer in my mornings, I felt guilty.
Peggy is an early bird and a housing person, so.
I'm happy to do it, I just.
It'll, it'll take, it'll take a while to transition that, because you have to go to Board of Supervisors to get approved, so you're going to have to align that up with a, a meeting with the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, you can explain that to me at some point. Okay, so am I doing that? Is that the deal here?
Is that a consensus?
Well, no, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it, but I'm just saying.
If you want to keep it, feel free.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I don't, I don't actually.
I know, that's fine.
So who's it?
I guess it's me by those.
But I'm just saying that somehow we have to contact the Board of Supervisors to notify them that this changed. And then they get to it when they get to it.
So you have to keep going until that happens?
You know, there's no meeting, there was no meeting this month. They, they often cancel meetings on this one too, so.
I'll email.
I presume there'll be a meeting in January, whether that can happen by January, I don't know.
I talked with the Clerk of Commission today and they said that I, after tonight, we will send them minute action, and then they will take care of the sending to the Board of Supervisor.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Okay, so we've got the JPA. Who is interested in, in the JPA?
I'm still interested in the JPA and probably happy to go there, so.
You'll be going anyway.
Yeah.
Is that all right with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
They'll be working on the field house. It will be, it will be interesting.
Do you want to be the alternate?
Would you be the alternate?
No, I was asking if you wanted to keep doing it.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
No, I've been doing it the whole time. I've been on council.
Oh, yeah, I can be the alternate.
I'm ready to let it go.
Sure. Sure.
Okay.
It's, it's actually pretty interesting, and, and JPAs are, at least the way this one has been run, are, are friendly loose, so if you want to, you know, if I'm going to go and you want to go, we can both go, it's, it's a pretty open, and it's a pretty informal discussion.
Can we just go together?
Yeah.
I just decided to get the lay-in.
Yeah, and, you know, if you, I had it interesting because I had a kid that played soccer down at the fields, but it's, it is interesting, but very informal.
Well, and the field, I mean, I think it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting thing going forward for folks who are interested in the Gilman interchange and what happens with transportation, because there's going to be a lot of discussion of the field house and how people get to the field.
They are tied because, you know, that interchange, unless that interchange extends the sewer system to where the field house is going to be, that field house is not happening.
It's toast, yeah.
So...
East Bay Community Energy.
Well, I would love to continue to serve. It's not quite been two years that I've served, and it's very technical, very wonky, and gone to all the meetings, keeping up with it, so I would, I would love to continue to serve.
I, I think Nick has been doing a great job, and he should continue being the wonk, as it were.
You're not interested in that?
No.
No, they don't. Well, that might be a reason to put you on that board, I don't know, sometimes a skeptic can be a really valuable thing on a board, but it doesn't sound like you're too interested, so...
I can be the alternate if that works.
Great.
I think I went one time because Nick's been a real champion at that. I have a comment about Berkeley Albany Mental Health. Both of our appointees are appointees, there, there's nobody's pending anymore.
Right.
Yep.
Do they ever report to us? Do we ever get a...
As mayor, you get minutes, which doesn't tell you a whole lot, but...
Yeah, okay.
It might be good to get, you know, a little presentation every once in a while or something.
These two have actually been there a while. Yeah, maybe at some point we'd ask them.
They were rotating so fast it wasn't worth asking, you know, what was happening.
It doesn't say how often they meet, how often do they meet?
Fourth Thursday at 7:00.
Oh, oh, I see, it is on this one, though, fourth Thursday, okay.
Okay, and then the Police and Fire Pension Fund Board.
You forgot the two by two by two, by two by two.
That's, that's a...
That's a defined...
Yeah, that's us.
I just figured.
Okay. Police and Fire Pension Fund Board.
You know, I'm actually happy to go to those, kind of a...
Really? Okay, well, I don't know, I can't imagine, there's a lot of people asking for that. Is anybody else interested in this pension fund board? I mean...
You know, they're...
Those that have been, no.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
It's sort of interesting, and what I found the most interesting about it, actually, is just that we would get these financial statements by the people that had invested the funds, and, you know, it's actually sort of generally applicable to, you know, funds that I might have, too, so you got this other kind of economic report.
Oh, that is interesting.
Well, I would be just...
Well, I'm, I'm happy to go, but I, I would, but you, if you're going to be the main person, I don't think two people need to go to that, right?
Well, we can still, we can all go.
Well, we need, yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't, but I think we can go, right? It's, there's only two of us, so if we want to just go for the information, that's fine.
And it's a public meeting, we can all go.
It's a, you know, it's sort of a semi-public meeting, but, you know, and that's a question I have, that, that meeting's usually been chaired by Kim Denton, so how's that going to work going forward?
So we'll have to find a new staff liaison in two years.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll look to who we have available to staff that.
Okay.
Actually, you can do it, Pete.
Yeah, I can do that, I mean, it's...
Okay. Michael, are you the alt, I'm sorry.
I want to be in Pete.
Oh, to be in Pete?
Yeah.
Okay, are you the alternate or are you the lead, Pete?
Whatever, you know, I mean...
Okay.
I think Peggy's the lead.
Why, why don't you be the...
I'll be the lead and I'll expect to see you there all the time.
Okay, I think we're...
Because I think he's right, that's the part that's interesting, is hearing the guy's international finance conversation.
Right.
Okay.
They actually do a pretty damn good job, I would say.
Okay, do we need a vote on, do we need to do a formal motion to approve this?
Yeah, because you need minutes, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I hear a...
So move?
Second? Roll call?
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Neeson?
Yes. And that brings us to nearly the end of our agenda, other business, announcement of events, and future agenda items, and I would like to speak to the strategic planning process for a moment. We are, have two meetings scheduled, one on January 3rd, which will be billed in the evening, this is a Thursday, the first, it is a Thursday, right? Yeah, Thursday, this is the Thursday night before our Monday meeting. The Monday meeting, it's okay, we'll be done soon, Craig, don't worry.
You're like a little kitty.
We needed, you, you only moved it to 10:45.
I know, it's too fast.
Okay, so we will, and the, the notion is this, on the Thursday before the Monday meeting, this will give a chance for the, for the public to give, give their ideas and input for things we should be talking about. The Monday meeting, we have traditionally billed as a retreat, and, and this one, I'm asking that we not use the word retreat, because I feel like that can be a little bit inappropriate in a, it seems to me to kind of project the idea that we don't want people to come, and we don't, we don't want to be saying that, it's, it's mostly for the council to interact with each other about this, but people can come if they wish. And then further down the line, we will have a work session where advocates and anyone who is interested can come, and there can be some dialogue and interaction between the council and those with a deeper interest. So it would be three meetings, go ahead.
I think we need to discuss this, so I am going to move, we extend until 11:00.
Okay.
Second's fine.
We're all in. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I think I finished what I was going to say.
So what date, what are we, I'm not sure I'm following this, this is, the strategic plan meeting is when?
Well, the, we, we have had the strategic plan retreat on calendar for the 7th.
On the 7th, right.
Which is daytime on a Monday.
Right.
And what I'm proposing is that we have a public meeting in the evening on a Thursday night.
Thursday before the 3rd?
The 3rd itself.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be out of town.
Before the 7th. Okay. You know, I was originally just thinking of this as sort of a mayor thing that I would do, but...
I can't do the 3rd either, I have to take someone to the airport.
Oh, okay.
Are you suggesting that one of our meetings won't be public?
No, all of our meetings will be public, and we will stop using the word retreat, however, about our, our Monday daytime meeting. But I'm proposing to add a Thursday night meeting as a kind of listening session, which it could be just the mayor, the mayor and the vice mayor, or everybody, whatever works, but I think that we need to have something to, that is not daytime meeting to give the public input into what we should be thinking about in the strategic plan.
Right, and, well, that, that sounds like a decent idea, since daytime will preclude a bunch of people. Of course, the public can come and comment on the daytime meeting as well, during the daytime meeting, but the Thursday before would be for input into what's going to be in the Monday meeting as well? Or no?
No, just for people to talk about what they would like to see the council prioritize.
Right, well, that, then that does sound like input into what our agenda would be on the Monday meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Not into, I guess what I was reacting to was into the agenda. The agenda will be published for the Monday meeting by the time we invite the public, you know, offer to listen to the public on a Thursday, the Thursday beforehand.
So the Thursday would just be another opportunity for the public to comment on those items?
That doesn't require them to come on a work day, during a work day, yeah.
Do you think, you know, I'm, I'm, no, I can't make it, but do you think most of the public could make it on, you know, two days after New Year's? I mean, that's sort of a dead week oftentimes, so I'm wondering how many people we would expect to...
It's not great, but, you know, the, the, maybe we shouldn't do the 7th, maybe the 7th should be put over.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering whether we could do something online, you know, to make comments online, or, or maybe that would all be in addition to...
Oh, I would see that as an addition, yeah, very definitely. People should be able to...
I, you know, I just wonder how many people come out on a Thursday night that's unusual.
The time, the time, I think, would be fine, but it, it's problematic that you two on the end there wouldn't be able to come.
You two on the end, well...
Should we maybe move this whole process a little bit later?
No, I have some concern about what the 3rd would look like, I can imagine derailing, I mean, I look at our strategic plan as, we have it, we're sort of amending it all the time, we keep it sort of, we add to it, we change it, but we don't like to start over, and I'm afraid if we, if we don't structure this really carefully, we could end up with a lot of, sort of...
Well, I, the usual suspects will show up when we're not willing to.
So an alternative process, if the 3rd isn't working, we may have some staffing, at least the, the filming that we would need to work through, too, I think we could probably get that covered. If the council's interested in an alternative, we could continue to have what, what we would consider a work session of the council on the 7th, which would be a daytime morning event that is open to the public, we would have it in this room, so it's more accessible. And that would be a time, really, for staff to review the status of accomplishing your existing strategic plan, but it's also a time for the council to look at policies and procedure and your, your, kind of your rules of order document, so it's, it's a twofold goal, if you will, at that meeting. If we don't have the event on the 3rd, we could go further along, so the council looks at the update, gives general direction on things that you'd like to see incorporated into the strategic plan, and then we could come back with a study session, so that we have the community input on a working document, and then we could follow that up with an additional meeting where the council reviews and adopts, but again, here's any comment if we still haven't quite hit the mark on some of the goals or objectives.
I, yeah, I'd still rather do something before we hold a really important meeting that is on a work day, I'd rather, and that really guarantees that we will only get the usual suspects. What's that, Craig? Do you want to...
You could have the non-retreat strategic planning session on the evening of the 7th, that'd be a regular meeting time.
In the past, traditionally, the council has canceled that first meeting in January, so we were trying to get ahead of the curve by having it as a work session with the daytime hours. Any of those options are available.
Okay, you know, when I first thought of this, I was really just thinking of meet the mayor, kind of, you know, new mayor, happy to have a dialogue, come in and give us your ideas. Then I thought, well, everybody should, if we're going to invite people to, you know, speak their mind, everybody should have the opportunity to be there, and we should notice it as a Brown Act thing, but I'm fine with just doing a mayor thing and not, not having it be a, a council event. Does that, I just feel strongly that we should do something that is easier for the public to attend than a weekday meeting.
What's the expectation from the public? What do they think, how are they going to think this relates to our strategic plan?
I don't think it has to even mention the strategic plan, I mean, especially if it's just a mayor thing, it could just be, you know, listening, meet the mayor, and opportunity to, to talk about your thoughts about the council and what, and the city and what you'd like to see.
Well, you know, I think you put it in that category, I'm possibly more comfortable with that. If you want to do something that, that invites people in, you can hear what they have to say, that's great, but I, I think it would also work in terms of us meeting on the 7th, you know, discussing our strategic plan, and then this becomes sort of more public as we go on, on, on those specific ideas.
Yeah.
But certainly, if you'd like to do a...
Yeah, why don't we just do it that way?
Do something, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Are you interested in coming?
I would come, yeah. It was on, if we did something on the 3rd, yeah.
So if it was three of us, there would be a quorum, and we would need to do a public meeting notice.
Well, we would anyway, it sounded like you were going to anyway, sort of thing.
Do we do a Brown Act notice anytime we do a...
If it's just a meeting with one or two council members, you wouldn't necessarily post the standard agenda.
Yeah.
You said it was only two.
So what...
But if it's three, you have to, right?
Yeah, if it's three, it's got to be noticed, and you have to follow all the formalities.
Yeah.
Which of those two choices would you prefer?
I guess we're still live here. Would you prefer having just meet the mayor, or would you prefer having Nick and I there too? Which, which is your preference?
You know, I'm, I'm pretty happy either way, if, if the assumption is it's going to be just regulars who come to meetings and, you know, it's not going to, we're not going to be hearing anything new, that's, I don't want you guys to feel like you have to come, but if, if we, you know, can generate some of the people, you know, especially the people who are always emailing us saying, why doesn't the city do this or that, you know, give them a chance to kind of make their, make their pitch, then if, if it's that, if there is some, you know, if we are going to draw in people who may not usually come to city council meetings, I think it would be great to have as many of us there as we can manage, but I don't want you to feel obligated to come, and I don't, especially if, you know, it does turn out it's, it's only people that we, we are used to seeing in, in our regular meetings.
Seems like we need to give this a little bit more thought, and if it really doesn't directly relate to the strategic plan, which now it sounds like it doesn't, maybe it's something we want to do either later in January or in February, when we've all kind of had a time to sort of think about what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, I just worry that the strategic plan, you know, moves forward without the public being given enough of an opportunity to engage.
Well, they actually have two regular evening council meetings to engage.
To, to do good of the city?
No, two, we could agendaize it twice, right? Isn't that what we've done in the past?
A study session and then an approval at a separate meeting, yes.
So...
So it's actually three, I mean, one daytime opportunity and the review and update, and then a study session to formally update and address any comments that you will receive, and then approval would be at a follow-up meeting.
So there's two evening meetings to talk about it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine just doing it, you know, you guys should not feel obligated, but if you do want to be part of it, I'd, I'd be delighted.
And that's something we would need to determine, if it is a meet the mayor, maybe the vice mayor attends as well, if we're going to more than two council members, staff needs to know that, and they need to know it now, in terms of the agenda, because we'll have a holiday closure coming up very soon.
Right, yeah.
Right, that's, that's what I'm...
Right, that's why I'm a little concerned about the timing.
Well, if it's a, if it's a meet and greet, then I would probably recommend it stay either with the mayor or with the mayor and vice mayor at this point in time. And then if there's something more formal that the council would like in the future in terms of a different format of a meeting for some sort of information gathering, we can certainly look at that in the future too, when we all have more aptitude to consider those options.
Is this something that you two would be interested in if it was a different time? If you could attend...
I think so, yeah. I mean, if this is an information gathering thing.
I remember last time we did our strategic meeting, we had two people, so it was Alan Barris.
Yeah.
Well, and I think...
Actually, the last one was nobody, I believe, right?
Right.
Wasn't it? At the...
At the maintenance place, yeah.
At the Public Works?
So I think there's sort of two tracks here. One is sort of a meet and greet with the mayor, the council, whoever, and that's different, I think, than a pre-strategic plan meeting.
I think a meet and greet, though, can be, oh, so you're the mayor, so what about this item? This has always been my pet peeve and that organically you will receive the concerns expressed by some individuals that choose to attend this. And then that could be channeled through the strategic planning process, Rochelle could say. In my meet and greet, I received 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items. Are these priorities to the five of us as well, representing the entire community? Yes or no?
Yeah, and I'm not envisioning anything like, you know, butcher paper and dots or anything. I have no interest in butcher paper and dots. This would just be a chance for people to come and, you know, hopefully, we might find a way to, to bring in some people that we don't see at good of the, good of the city.
So back to my original question, since we're the only other two, are you...
I really, just really, I just need clarity because I believe this was presented as a pre-strategic plan thing. Now, is it a, if it's a meet and greet the mayor thing?
It will, I do...
If that's what you want, then you should have that.
And I do intend it to inform my own perspective on the strategic plan.
If you'd like to have it just yourself or yourself and the vice mayor, that's perfectly fine. I just need to know, you've kind of expressed many different things that you want here. I don't know what you want, so tell me what you want.
My preference would be to have, you know, something for the whole, for the whole council in advance of doing anything at all on the strategic plan, so that the public, just to give the public an opportunity to give input. But clearly, we can't do that if we stick with the 7th where there isn't another date that will work, and so we're losing two members. So I would suggest it just be the mayor.
What if we did it on that weekend? Could we do like a Saturday morning? If we want to attract a different crowd, could we do a Saturday morning?
The mayor and vice mayor or a meeting of the council?
A meet and greet with the council.
I don't know that I would have the staff available to staff a Saturday meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we got to, we got to put an end to this, so I think this will just be a meet the mayor kind of thing. I'll try to, you know, gather as much as I can from the public and bring it with me on Monday to the, to the strategic planning session, if we even get to substantive anything on, on that Monday.
Okay, so just logistically, it's a meet the mayor, you're in the dais, and we're in the audience. What do we have to do?
No, I'm not going to sit up here and...
On her throne.
If we're, if we're wherever we are.
All by myself.
It's a meet the mayor.
If you're going to have three council members present, that needs to be noticed as a meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
It can be a meet the mayor, but it'll be noticed.
Yeah. So anybody, anybody here who wants to come, can come.
Okay, so staff needs to be clear. If it's a, if it's a council meeting or if it's a meet the mayor, because if it's a council meeting, we need to agendize it and we need to agendize it this week. So if three of you are attending, it will be a council meeting.
I almost certainly would attend just to hear the input and I don't have to be a participant.
Now, in my time here, we, like when Beth Pollard was city manager, she put on a faith community thing and all the members of the city council were planning to come, so she put up a Brown Act notice on the website. I mean, you, you don't have to call it a meeting of the council, do you? You can say, this is the meeting.
Yes.
I've seen, I know I've seen notices that said, a majority of the council may attend.
Yeah, I think that's probably a different category. That's more like a community meeting.
Uh huh.
You're just going above and beyond the Brown Act requirements by telling the community that a majority of the council may be attending that community meeting.
Yeah.
For a social or educational activity. This is something different, though, because you're really talking about scheduling an opportunity to discuss city business.
Yeah.
It should be agendized as a meeting.
So it would be, it could be a council meeting.
It'd be a special, it'd be a special council meeting. And I guess there'd be one, one agenda item, which would be...
Yeah. So, but if it's meet the mayor, it can be nothing. I mean, right? That can be...
If it's meet the mayor, we would need to ensure that only two council members are attending and then that it is not a council meeting.
Right, but why don't we just not do that? Why don't we just, I'll do it unless anybody else feels strongly about being there.
Oh, yeah, I would be there. I mean, I feel strongly that that's, that I want to be there. So that would preclude Peggy from being there.
I could probably live without.
Okay.
Yeah.
I need direction. I'm not quite sure where we are here.
Okay, well, it's...
You keep it to two.
It's going to be meet the mayor, it's just me, but if Nick wants to come, he can come, but nobody else will come. Is that the deal? Does that work for everybody?
Vice Mayor and McCray.
It works for me, but does it work for Peggy?
It comes, it's a council meeting.
It's just, it just feels weird to me, but that's fine.
It feels weird to me too, but it would make more sense, it seems like it would make more sense if it was mayor, vice mayor.
Well, I don't want, but I don't want to exclude Nick. I mean, in all seriousness, I, you're interested, I think you should be able to be there. So let's, let's make it a council meeting and then whoever is able to come is able to come.
Agenda is meet the mayor or is it to obtain, but prior to the strategic planning
You know, something feels strange about this.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not there yet.
This is kind of last...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we put over the 7th? Because this is what is giving me heartburn, is that we're going forward, we're going to kind of bake in, we're going to start baking our strategic plan before the public has been given really any opportunity at all, unless they're willing to take a day off work. And that just feels wrong to me.
Go ahead, Nicole, I'm sorry.
That's fine. And what I can do at the study, or at the work session, the daytime work session on January 7th is simply give you a status update of where we are with the strategic plan. You'll see what we've completed and then the council will have an opportunity to think about what they may want to consider adding in place of the things that will be removed because they were completed.
That's the piece I don't want to do before the public has had a chance to weigh in.
Exactly. All I will do is give you an update on what we've completed and we won't go any further into what should we expect.
Okay, we'll do that and the procedure.
Right.
And then we can talk at that meeting about the next step that will...
Right, which would be a study session.
Okay, good. And then if I want to do some listening session, meet the mayor, whatever it may be, I can just do that and nobody should come so that we don't have a Brown Act thing, right?
If I want to meet the mayor. I still have some angst about, about that because the strategic plan is the council's strategic plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where, I've always kind of appreciated the ability to have the conversation among ourselves in public, whether or not the public is actually there, maybe... And it's nice to be able to have these conversations a little bit less formally. And the public still has two opportunities to do this before we nail it down. I would prefer that we stay on, on track with the way we've done it in the past.
I agree with that. I, I think the way we've done it, even though it's, you know, I'm in full agreement that it's good to get public, you know, input into this, but, you know, it's an informal process that we're going through sort of on, on that Monday. And then later, when we lay it open, it can change. It's not like, I think we go into the next meeting saying, this is it and, you know, this is our plan.
These are our thoughts.
Yeah, these are our thoughts and, and, you know, nobody in Albany lies down and just says, whatever, you're, you're in charge. I mean, this, everyone's pretty independent here, so, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not too concerned about that. I, you know, I understand the principle, but I don't, I see why we should make this different.
Well, I'd just like it to be a little, a little bit more open than it has been. I just see, you know, daytime work day, you know, meetings that require people to take a day off work bother me. I'd like them to have an opportunity, but I can see that, you know, that's not working for others. But with the 7th, but it'll be an update plus the procedure stuff. And then as far as substantive, tackling the substantive stuff of what we want in the next strategic plan, we can discuss the process there.
Well, let me, let me just get in here. Let's, let's extend again.
I got to interject too. I mean, we're kind of getting into a very extended discussion, something that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
And the exception is really for just scheduling a future agenda item, so we're kind of getting past that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, but how, so then what's your advice for moving forward? Because we have a difference of opinion on how to run that 7th meeting.
I was just going to make one quick suggestion. Nighttime meeting on...
I guess my advice has reached a decision.
Yeah. Nighttime meeting on the 7th, daytime meeting on the 14th. Can we do that?
I don't know. I don't have that calendar in front of me and I'm not comfortable picking dates out of thin air.
Yeah, I'm not.
Okay, so we better just move along as we have planned, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Retreat Monday, the 7th.
But not getting into the substance on the 7th until we've done...
I'm not hearing a consensus on that, so...
No?
Yeah, because I heard some different viewpoints from a couple of other council members, so...
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we should just move forward as planned at this time.
Let me recap and see if this works for everyone.
Okay.
On the 7th, we will have a work session. It will include a strategic plan update and it will include some general concepts of how we're moving the strategic plan forward. It doesn't mean that you need to make any firm decisions. You can give staff direction on what to include in an update to the strategic plan. That would then be re-presented to you as part of a city council study session. And as you know, a study session is more informal. You have the opportunity for people to come up and give opinions and work through things on the fly through that strategic plan. Staff would then incorporate all those comments that are made and the direction given by council at that meeting and return to you at a subsequent meeting for adoption. So the public would conceivably have three opportunities to comment as well as always the opportunity to write in.
I think it's a terrible process, but if others like it, I'll, I'll go along with it. And I'll do something else about a meet and greet with the mayor and just ask that nobody plan to attend that, okay?
It's what I'm the most comfortable with. It's what I'm the most comfortable with.
Yeah.
And I would say, you know, we worry about people that are working can't come to this, but most of the people that comment on this are people that are already retired.
Of course they are.
Think about who's in that audience.
Yes, they are not, they are people who are not working.
So they can come on Monday and sit around with us, so...
There might be other people out there who have other ideas and would like to come and share them. That's, that's my concern. Yes.
Want to make sure that we have a consensus on that.
All right.
Okay. You have to sit back down, you have to sign a bunch of papers.